Mr. Delkor, if you are, can you hear us? Can you just indicate if you can hear us? I'm using you. Perfect. And I think we'll be able to hear him once it quiets down.
Yeah, I heard him go, "Yep."
Muting again for a minute.
My computer like electronically sign it and send it over.
Not the same.
What's not the same? I agree. It's not the same.
Oh, do you?
I think you must. Now, I think you got the ones that I got a head start on. I already gave them to you. Oh.
So you'll be done.
All right.
Wow, I'm impressed that you're gonna run for office.
Well, he's the manager.
I'll tell you what I can't imagine having to do is, you know, an official, like an official bill signing where you have to do the...
Oh, the seventeen pence?
Right, and you have to do this much of your signature with whatever.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, that would be annoying.
Yeah, I mean, because we're all so used to just going "bzzzz" and...
Yeah, like it's hard to get thrown off your...
What's the password?
You're enjoying this, I can tell, just because you know how much I hate it.
These, I'm not done with these yet. These, I'm done with.
No, I need these. Do those first, because I'm bound to have to sign them.
My voting for, okay. Trying to figure out. It's harder when you're standing right there. I don't know why. Promise? Can I have that in writing, Nicholas?
I have a pen for you if you need.
I swear, these Tommy Walls pens are like the best pens. I use them for every, they're so good. They hold up great.
Northfield Savings Bank has the best pens.
I've heard that, yes. Alyssa will steal them every time she goes for it. Oh, I shouldn't say that, the mics are on.
My dad has a couple of pens on his kitchen table, and there's about forty pens from Northfield Savings Bank.
I should have signed those first, I give those to Carol.
Okay.
Are we expecting Sam?
Yeah, I think so.
As far as I know, I hadn't heard otherwise.
Here's your plug back. Thank you.
Uh, do you have the password? March 5th is here, huh? March 5th, huh?
Not that I'm counting.
Please tell me you have somebody recruited.
I'm trying, I've tried to get her to come in and talk with me, and she hasn't responded to my emails, and so...
Huh? Reminding you the mics are on, which is...
Oh, I'm sorry, oh my gosh, yeah.
So...
I don't care if you don't care, I already just figured it out.
So, starting, um, starting right after Thanksgiving, I'm gonna put something in for porch forum that basically says, "Hey, have you got any interest in what the Clerk Treasure does? Meet me at, on Saturday morning from eight to ten, and we'll talk about it, you know, throw it open to..."
Almost, um...
They're safe, we're there.
Uh, yep, that was it. That was it, sir, thank you.
Hey, never mind, we figured it out.
What was it?
Welcome, Sam. Are you ready to sign fifty thousand things?
I'm at eighteen, with a capital G.
It'd be more fun.
That's right.
So these are all for Sam?
Well, how about that?
And I didn't ask him, I don't, you know, I didn't want to feed into his ego. He'd be like, you know...
Nothing like an election, Sam.
Really are. Nicholas did a really nice job on these.
Yeah.
Did you help write the proclamation?
Officially, it's...
Kind of.
Oh, I should have brought my pants, I have pants.
He is the wordsmith. I'm not the wordsmith, Nicholas. Nick has done one as well.
And your blotter.
This is the one that Nicholas had done up, and it's really nice as well.
No, we did actually get, we got fancy engraved pens for the rising stars thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I'll put them on Tom's place?
Tom's not coming tonight, so most of...
He's already signed.
But for those ones, he's signed them already.
Well, looking forward to Tom's budget questions.
I'm exhausted, I think I'll go home.
Whatever you can do for fun. At this stage of the game, it's not, it's not a, you know, line, line, line budget discussion.
No, 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 it's like...
It's a big picture.
It's like the scenarios of budget adjustment.
See if I can get out.
Warning it by January 30th. Budget adjustment, I actually use these in March.
Well, we don't do budget adjustments.
Hooked up for us.
No, 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 but like, uh...
For us, you're talking...
How does that interplay? That's what I'm a little fuzzy about, yeah.
Oh, yeah, what's our drop dead budget deadline? January 30th is the last regularly scheduled council... I think it's the 30th. It's thirty days before, so...
I was gonna say, forgetting scheduled meetings, but like the actual, because...
Yeah, oh, well, the actual is that is the following Saturday.
Right, well, because I...
It seems like a...
If we can... I don't want to put chicken anywhere that anyone else does, but if the budget, if the statewide budget adjustment can get passed or something...
Can I do it?
No, they're not gonna pass anything meaningful. I mean, the only thing they're gonna pass meaningful by that point is the abatement of education access. Which helps, which helps this year, but not next year, so...
How are you doing?
Yeah, good.
Sorry to have missed Sunday. I was in another world.
Yeah, that's good. I baked for like the first time in maybe two years, I don't know. Just muffins, nothing fancy, but it's like, yeah, I...
Hey, you can bring me muffins anytime you want.
All right, yeah, well, I did have some left there, but now they're no good.
All right, all right.
Pizza long.
Really?
Pretty much.
We got one of those new, um, convection inductions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're very, it's pretty cool. Cooks, well, Lisa does tons of bread baking, so she has a starter all the time. She's a much better cook than I am in Baker, than I am, and she complains about the stuff I make, so I get a little demoralized, so I just don't bother.
Yeah, so it's just like, fine.
Go, fine, yeah. Are we waiting? We're just finishing up this thing, so we, uh, since that's the first order of, uh...
She's getting there.
Yeah, sorry, Michael. No, it's fine.
Becoming less and less legible every time.
Almost there, we're almost there, all right.
Legible isn't required, but...
The end of the pile.
I have a signature stamp from when I started, and my signature looks nothing like that stamp, you know, fifteen years later.
All right.
Okay.
Are we ready to, ready to roll?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is a little bit after six, sorry for the late start, and I'm gonna call this Berry City Council meeting to order on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. It's, uh, the, um, the agenda is available online and in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, both of which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to everybody, everyone joining us, both here in the room and, and online. So those of you joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used to identify technical issues or difficulties and to remain muted unless speaking. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized, and if, uh, if you're here in the room, we'll ask that you come forward and speak into the microphone. I'll call in people who haven't spoken yet to speak first in limiting time if necessary, so we can get through what's gonna be a very full agenda for this evening. I suspect we might have a late night and might, might even need a recess at one point. Um, please state your name for the record if you do speak, and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. Um, and as I always ask, I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a respectful and civil way. With that, that takes us to our second item on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. Manager Straly Caster, do you have any adjustments?
Thanks, Mary. I have two, um, request to add a new item, six G to the consent agenda, which Clerk Doss emailed the council about. This is to approve a resolution to execute a loan for the lead service inventories that the council approved in May. Uh, this is just the, the application documents which require legislative body approval. Uh, and, um, per email with the council, add a discussion item, I imagine, to the end of the new business agenda about free holiday parking, a request from the partnership. So that would be 10 F.
Great. And was there a request for where the revenues would go if authorized?
No, no, it was just a request for the free parking.
Right, great. Um, city councilors, do you have any adjustments? Council Booton?
I would like to remove, um, Leonine Public Affairs, execute that contract from the consent agenda, and put it down into new business for discussion.
Sure, I'll put it after we talk about CVRPC, but before free holiday parking, since it was on the board agenda. Um, so Leonine, okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to item three on the agenda. We have a resolution, uh, tonight, uh, it's number 202311, honoring the BYSA seventh and eighth grade football team for winning the state championship, and I'll ask, and Council Dearing, read that resolution.
We got a copy right here.
All right.
Whereas the Berry Youth Sports Association, BYSA, seventh and eighth grade football team, achieved excellence on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, when they upset top seeded Linden by a score of thirty-seven to thirty-two at Colchester High School to claim their first Northern Vermont Youth Football League state championship. And whereas the victory, the victory, the culmination of a successful season, which opened with a forty-two zero win against Bradford and included twelve to six regular season victory against Linden, which was Linden's only regular season defeat. And whereas the team known as the Crimson Tide faced and overcame adversity of close defeats against St. John's Barry and North Country. And whereas the Crimson Tide finished second in the division after a consistent season which featured both the second-rated defense and offense in the league. And whereas the championship, championship season was a fitting end for a team that entered the season with high expectations and delivered. And whereas this is the first championship for the BYSA Crimson Tide after two prior appearances in the championship game. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Berry City Council that the members of the council commend the BYSA Crimson Tide among its NVYFL state championship and congratulate Alexander Abdella, Braden Busquet, Lucas Bradley, Brian Carbonell, happy birthday, Donovan Carrion, Nolan Carrion, Noah Sepeda, Logan DeJardens, Landon Duchaine, Nova Eberly, Carter Fisk, Wyatt Fuller, Deacon Gracius de Forge, Trevor Graham Boys, Riley Haggett, Logan Haskins, Eli Hoare, Matt Howard, Andre Jacobs, Javion Castner, Levi Laramore, Wyatt Lee, David Marcellus, James Marcellus, Kaden Mason, Kobe Owen, Nolan Palmer, Eli Pike, Alexander Pollard Allen, Solomon Thompson, Lucas Willis, Kano Wood, head coaches Matt Carbonell and Rob Owen, and assistant coaches Greg Fuller, Adam Wallace, and David Pike. And be it further resolved that the city council extends to each of the members of the BYSA Crimson Tide our sincerest wishes for their continuing success academically and athletically. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry, and that a copy be transmitted to the members of the team and by the coaching staff by the order of the, of the city council this twenty-first day of November, 2023.
Guys, wanna come on up? We got certificates for you.
That's nice.
Go on up for a picture, right?
Translations.
Yeah, just right there. Just saying. In front of me.
Matt, Rob, Adam, Greg. David. You're welcome, thank you. Great job, thank you.
Take your hood off. Hey, it's too late. For your support, appreciate it.
Why did we do forty?
Poachers squeeze in. While we stay on the desk, throw the beer.
Is that good? Michael did it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Officer, uh...
I was cheering.
Well deserved, for sure.
I know, I don't see, I didn't see Amos.
Are we gonna be able to pet him?
I did see Amos outside, I parked next to him.
He knows.
Amos is, I parked next to him. Outside.
Were we supposed to go outside? Is that what's happening?
The canine officer.
Oh.
Canine Mike.
Oh my gosh, we are gonna be here. All right, so, uh, the next item on the agenda is a police department canine demonstration, but I think we, we might need a few more minutes, so what I'll do is just, uh, call an audible and move up, um, visitors and communications for the time being. Um, as a, uh, this is an opportunity to speak to any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Would anybody like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? If, if you're here to speak to an item that is on the agenda, what you can do is just raise your hand, and we take up that item of business, so, um...
I would like to speak. I'm Stephen Ruscally, 26 Pond Street, Berry. And on October 31st, we had, uh, a visit to, uh, to... For a non-compliant building, which was, it's a, uh, being used as, it was a storage building that's being used as a storage yuck with debris and junk. And we want that, uh, used to, to be discontinued, and if it's gonna only be occupied, to only occupy the building which was previously allowed and not to have any external storage because of the debris and nails being left in the road and, uh, lawnmowers driving up and down the road. It's, uh, anyway, the city manager came out, and he inspected that with Janet, so I'd like him to report to us and let us know what it's finding for.
Hi, Stephen, thanks for the question. Uh, yeah, and I was there with Janet and Brian Baker, Director of Public Works, um, and we're, um, consulting with the city's attorneys to see what the steps are on the zoning issue here. This has a long history, um, and so we are, um, we're actively, uh, seeking legal advice to see what, what the next steps would be on, on, uh, on the use of that property. It's, it's a zoning issue, um, and it's a complex one, uh, so we, we needed to pull in some outside help.
Excuse me, I didn't get the address.
Did you say three Orchard Street?
In Berry.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Stephen?
To Orchard Street in Berry. And the other concern that I have is the security for the building. There's no electricity, it's, it's dark, they leave the doors open at night, and inviting anybody to come in, um, it's pitch black. You, in fact, with a flashlight, you'd be hard pressed to even get around in that dark corner. Um, there have been a number of warehouses that have burned down due to homeless people seeking shelter in cold weather. We're now in cold weather, and I don't want to see a repeat in history of this event.
All right, so it sounds like the city manager will look back once, uh, there's a legal opinion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Will you get back to me?
Of course we will, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we pivot back to, um, our canine demonstration, uh, are there any other items for visitors? I mean, any other, would anyone else like to speak to, under visitors and communication? And I'll look back to you, uh, Sean, for the Berry Up after the demonstration.
Had her hand up, and then, and then she put it down, so...
Okay, all right. Well, we can look back, and for now, wel- welcome.
All right, um, so, first of all, my name's Corporal Ames K. Ward. I work for the Berry City Police Department. This is my canine partner, Canine Mike. Uh, we've been partners since fall of 2018. I don't know how much of an actual canine demonstration I can give you guys here in this small space, so I'll probably just do a lot of talking about like what we've accomplished in the last year, some of the training we've done, some of our deployments and things like that. Uh, so Mike here came to us via his donations to the Michael Zamanic Memorial Foundation and the Hometown Foundation back in 2018. Um, he's named after Mr. Zamanic, who was an officer who went to work for Berry City, um, who practically passed through a medical incident back in 2013. Mike is an import from the Czech Republic. He comes from a work capital over the Czech Republic. Uh, we are dual certified in the state of Vermont, so what that means is we are certified in apprehension, tracking narcotics detection, and evidence location. Mainly, we do a lot of, uh, narcotics detection and tracking, uh, some of the things, mixed in between there. So Mike is, uh, just turned six this past fall, and, uh, he's through Red Germ Shepherd. Um, we, we went through about a year of training to kind of get to all of our certifications in line. So, I'll just gotta read off some of the things they've done in the last year here. So, um, to this point, in November 21st, 2023, uh, we've had ninety deployments. Out of these ninety deployments, fifty-seven were for narcotics detection, and, uh, the other thirty-three were patrol detection, patrol-related deployments. Um, so not only are we assisting Berry City, but we are assisting pretty much every other agency throughout the county or some of our neighboring counties, like Orange County. We've assisted EST Berlin, EST Royalton, um, Washington County sheriffs, Orange County sheriffs, Berlin Police Department, Long Hiller Police Department, Berry County Police Department, Northfield Police Department. Pretty, pretty much everywhere in the area uses us. Um, some of these police departments have their own units, but not all the times that they're available. Um, often times, we are getting called. So, out of these, uh, patrol deployments, we have had twelve different tracking deployments this year. Out of those twelve tracking deployments, we have a pretty good success rate as far as canine tracking goes. Canine tracking is very, very complicated and usually has a pretty low success rate. Out of those twelve tracking deployments, we do have five fines this past year. Um, out of those five fines, four of those were lead, uh, leading to arrests for multiple criminal violations. And then, most of our other patrol deployments make up building searches, so clearing buildings, you know, doors open or potentially burglaries, things like that. Um, and a lot of coordinators help during the execution and process of search warrants that we take part in. Kind of our forte, our big one, is our narcotics detection. We do a lot of narcotics work around the area. Um, out of the fifty-seven detection appointments, we've had thirty-four, uh, resulted in arrests this year. I've got a big fun stat sheet here. So, in this time, uh, this year, we seized over four hundred and sixty grams of crack cocaine, um, which is roughly a street value of fifty-six thousand dollars. Five hundred and sixty-two bags of fentanyl and almost ten grams of bulk fentanyl, which is about twenty-one point three-three grams altogether, which the lethal dose for fentanyl is about two milligrams. So that's about ten thousand five hundred lethal doses of fentanyl and cocaine on the street. That, um, is about sixteen grand, uh, street value. Uh, we've also done additional, about a hundred bags of heroin, uh, a couple grams of cocaine, various other prescription pills, six firearms in the past year, and then a large amount of currency and drug-related paraphernalia. So, um, in that, I, I want to kind of touch base on some of our big highlights from this past year and kind of our biggest project, won't say project, maybe the wrong word for it. Um, but one of the big things that we've been working on is, um, the, a, um, search warrants in relation to a drug trafficking organization that's been operating in the area for a while. Because of Canine Mike's nosework with detection, we have been able to get information from various traffic stops and various arrests of these narcotics arrests. We've been able to get information from these traffic stops to successfully locate and pull two underage juveniles who have been used by out-of-state drug trafficking organizations to sell drugs in the area. So that's kind of our big one for this year in, in my, uh, in my eyes. We've been able to, actually, one of them was a reported runaway, who was only, it's like fourteen years old, and the other one was seventeen years old. But we were both able to reunite them with their families, which is incredibly important. Um, in the same breath, we've also been able to arrest two of these out-of-state drug traffickers because of information gained from our stops with Canine Mike and narcotics detection deployments that we do. And, uh, that's kind of the basic overview. Um, we do a lot here in the city and the surrounding communities. Um, we're, we're kind of everywhere. I, I'd be more than happy to answer any and all questions, if anybody has. I've got lots to talk about.
I'm very impressed with your dog. I, um, I've seen some folks out tracking before, and I get the impression that when you do that, you have to, you have to be out there practicing with them frequently. What, what does that involve for you?
Eighteen hours of training every month at minimum to keep up our certifications. So in the state of Vermont, we have to have a bare minimum of eighteen hours of training to keep up our dual certification. Um, that's with the tracking, the apprehension, and the narcotics detection stuff. Um, but I mean, we're doing lots of other training on the side. You know, it's any given night during shift if I have time. We're doing training on our own as well. Um, actually, this past year, one of the things that we were fortunate enough, fortunate enough to do... Actually, this past year, one of the things that we were fortunate enough to do is I was able to get my DEA license with the DEA, which allows me to possess training aids for narcotics, which has been a super large help for us. It gives us the ability to train those, train other narcotics that we're certified in outside of our training hours, because I'm legally allowed to possess those for training purposes.
I really want to pet him.
He's at work.
I know, I know the rules. No, no, it's okay. I know the rules of, I remember when he came on board six years ago and we got a nice presentation out in the, at the playground where, where he was able to find the, I think it was in the snow, and he did a fantastic job. If counselors that haven't experienced it, I highly recommend it. It's just to see, I almost think you also had somebody.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that we could probably set up in probably better warmer months.
Probably, probably.
But I mean, we certainly do lots of training in the coldness now too, we have to, so.
Is there anything that we can do to help you do your job better?
Well, I have a pair of tuck on that today. It's going to come up. So I mean, ultimately, what it comes down is just the number of officers that we have on at any given point. Apparently tonight, we have two officers on for the city of Berry, and of course, I'm here doing this, and the other officer's on the road right now. You know, it's a lot easier for us to do the proactive work to combat some of our issues here in the community when we have more officers available to us. It's hard for us, you know, having two or three officers on, you know, taking calls from the community, but at the same breath, also trying to address some of these other issues. And the thing is with these other issues, like a lot of the drug-related stuff, I mean, that is, part of those calls that are coming in is, you know, a lot of that stuff can be drug-related. So the more we combat one side, we might see less on the other. So, I mean, ultimately, you know, it's hard for us to, it's hard for us or me to focus on one issue if we're spread too thin, so to speak. So, you know, in that same breath, you know, like I said, we have, we have K-9 Mike for us here at Berry City, with their other dogs in the area, but they're extremely limited due to scheduling, overtime, it's things of that nature. Looking forward to the future, Mike is six now, so retirement age for a police K-9, eight to 10 on average, depending on the dog. So, it might be an okay to start thinking about the process of maybe adding on to our unit for a second dog, because, you know, I just told you what we did in a year. So the training process to take a new dog takes anywhere between six to 12 months, depending on the age of the dog. Luckily, when we got Mike, he was a little bit pre-trained, he came from a working kennel, he had some of those things already trained into him. But if you take a random dog who knows nothing, you know, that training process can take up to a year to do, and you've heard what we've done in a year. So, there's potential to miss out on a lot in the span of a year with having nothing while you're training up a different dog. So, you know, obviously not now, in the near future, it might not be a bad idea to start thinking about those things, because if we have more senior dog plus a green dog training, you know, still have that more senior dog available to us to do the things to protect the community and while another dog gets trained. And then you can kind of get in this cycle of having a more senior dog and more green dog and having one being fully trained while the other one's untrained, just because that training process does to a long time.
So Gavin, when you provide services for other municipalities, like you do a mutual aid call, is there a revenue source for the city on the other side of that? Like, do we bring in revenue? Do we bill that municipality?
No, no, so I need to see assists, not typically. And you might have heard, I did say that would be seized by a cash currency. That currency is evidence of drug sales typically. That's not something that's necessarily available to us unless it's brought up later in court proceedings, as something that's forfeited. During those court proceedings, it does and can happen, it does happen semi-regularly, but it's, the court proceedings take years at this point, you know, you're not looking at things coming back to us, you know, two to three years down the road. And even then, those, those monies seized from those types of incidents are only available to us for training or equipment, it can't be used towards anything else.
Yeah, so we did discuss bite work, and I don't think that's the proper term, but.
Apprehension.
Apprehension work.
Yeah.
Have you ever had to deploy him?
So he's been deployed in many situations like that, but fortunately enough, it's been more of a deterrent tool rather than the active apprehension. And ultimately, that's the preferred method. If he can be used as deterrents to tell someone, hey, maybe I ought to rethink my decisions, then fantastic. That's a better option for everybody, because then we are not deploying a different tool to use to, you know, use force, you know, it's a great valuable tool, just his presence says, okay.
Nicholas, and then I'll call on Amy Gelford.
So, is one of your pouches like dog treats? Because I'm a new dog owner.
Sean, I should talk to you.
Okay. I'm a new dog owner, I could fill that entire vest with like dog paraphernalia, and I know dog treats with you everywhere you go.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to happen, he's usually kind of stuffed in one of my cargo pouches over here. I mean, we spend, so I mean, he's at work just as much as I am. Whenever I'm at work, he's at work. He spends a lot of time, you know, I mean, he seems calm right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, because it's been a long road to get to that point.
Yeah. And just to follow up, if I may, how, I'm sorry I haven't asked you this, Officer, but how did you end up as the K-9 unit person? Was this something where you, were you the lone person on the totem pole? Is something you wanted to do?
It's something, it's something I wanted to, wanted to do, and actually, it's kind of circling back to, you know, not a proposal per se, but, you know, it's something I wanted to do, and it's a really highly sought-after position, especially for those newer officers. So, in the same breath, adding an additional K-9 unit to the city of Berry can be a very, very attractive thing to people from outside agencies who might think about applying for the city of Berry, especially when we develop a helping yet.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Amy Gelford and then Councilman.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I was just going to ask whether he has all the protective gear that you would want for him, like vests and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so he is wearing a vest currently. I don't know how to show that to everybody, really, but he has, he has a vest that is bullet and stab proof. This was actually a private donation that we got through the Vermont Police K-9 Association. Luckily for us, the Vermont Police K-9 Association, the largest working dog association in the state of Vermont, they help a lot with equipment and training needs, they're really good to us and all the other handlers in the state. So this, this vest was a donated item to us, is luckily a little pricey.
Councilman? So, I have the fun questions. So, is this your first German Shepherd?
Yes.
How'd you enjoy the shedding part of it? For those that don't know, they shed insanely. Yeah, beautiful dog, very beautiful dog. I certainly would love to see more dogs on the force, but, yeah. Have a treat if you want.
If you could just come to the microphone.
The one on the table?
Yeah, or speak up, yeah.
Speak up, I can do.
Yeah.
Nice to see you. Hi, and I don't know if you have data on this, but I'm curious if you.
I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kristin Baumann.
Thank you.
I'm the new director of the Aldrich.
Welcome.
I'm curious if you have data on, on the, on the, you know, the fentanyl, if there have been less drug-related deaths because of what you have recouped, if you've looked at that year by year, because that's a, that's tremendous work, that, getting that out of here and, you know, that's, that's really something to be commended, that's scary. Thank you.
Well, hey, I really appreciate that, you know, it's hard work to stop work, but, you know, I, I enjoy working with K-9 Mike, you know, because of that enjoyment, you know, I think everybody benefits. As far as, as far as any data on that, I don't have anything concrete, you know, it's really hard to say, you know, there's not a really good way to track exactly like what's coming in, what's coming out. I mean, we, I can throw out numbers out there, but I don't think anyone would be truthfully accurate, so I'm just not going to. All I know is the more that we can do to combat this issue, you know, maybe the harder it is for somebody to get a hold of that, you know, and at the end of the day, if I can make that possible, you know, even if it prevents one, then mission accomplished.
Thank you.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll be right back.
Way better behaved than I am. Leaving already? Wow.
So that loops us back to visitors and communications. If there's anybody that wants to speak to an item that's not on the agenda that didn't get a chance to, now's your time, and then we'll shift to an update from Berry Up, Sean Trader. Alright, hearing and seeing none, the temple's yours. Welcome.
He's very hot.
Alright, good evening, my name is Shawna Trader, I'm the executive director of Berry Up, that's the hat that I'm wearing tonight, and this is an update for that, so. Let's hear it, thank you, how can I help? You have any questions for me?
I think we're just hoping for an update, like, what are, what are future directions? Where are you now?
Yeah, let me tell you where we're at. It's a little hot. You know what, if you don't know, this, the Berry Up space is in City Hall, so I'm going to start by saying thank you to the city of Berry for donating the space, and we've also donated some credits for Walmart to Berry Up, which we're using to buy things like window treatment kits, for instance, winterization stuff, materials like that. So, the update with Berry Up is, we, we've got our bank account, we've got our finances fulfilled in that respect, there is a grant from Vermont Community Foundation for $100,000, which we were invited to apply for, and we have. There's another 15K from Vermont Humanities that was also an invitation to us that is applied for as well. Now, we have some additional leads of about $50,000 in that respect. The goal for the money, essentially, the main goal is to hire a construction manager to fulfill the MOU that we have with Resource and Youth Build, which is scheduled and hopefully to go into effect December 1st. We'll start with some low-stakes properties where the landlords are able to direct the team, but hopefully, we are a matter of a couple of weeks away from receiving that grant funding that I just mentioned.
Sean, can you just ease up on the mic a little bit?
Excuse me? Which means we're ideally a month or so away from hiring for a construction manager and really getting to work in earnest. Let's see. The goal for our, our funding, our short-term goal for funding in this is to secure an additional, additional $100,000. This will likely be through the participation of regional grant participation. So the construction manager, seeing the manifestation, the fruition of our relationship with Resource and Youth Build, we're really excited about that, some short-term goals that we have, we want to get six to eight properties identified rehabbed in case closed. We're working on clear data, so for instance, we have 25 flood-affected properties that can utilize Berry Up services, all of which have been contacted. We need to identify sources for rebuild materials, be it in cash or in-kind donations, and then of course, community education and information sharing, that's a big part of this puzzle. So, we have our case management aspect of the project, and we're continuing to pair residents with small volunteer teams that are capable of manual labor. For instance, we recently had the Secretary of State's office here, they removed a fallen tree, they helped filled sandbags. Volunteer groups can be directed to us at info@berryup.org, or they can be directed to the Hope Coalition, whom we know here in town is the faith-led rebuild group. So, we're both happy to have volunteers in that respect. If the funding is there, the goal for our case management wing is to hire a case manager. We'd like to onboard several volunteer case managers, we're building a really clear data management privacy policy, and as far as our software goes, there's a potential for a collaboration with the state, there's a potential for the state to be utilizing some case management software, and we're advocating for all flood LTRGs to have access to it, including here in Berry City, so that we can utilize the same software. Let's see, we have our data committee met last week, they are basically building a precise picture of what's going on, they have started their initial investigation, it's a lot of consolidation of the data that's out there, there's a lot spread out amongst all of the software and ways that we've been doing it. It's a really good team, it's already got four or five members on it. Amanda, the former ED, is chairing that committee, and there's several other people that have a lot of experience in the game, building data maps, et cetera, so we're going to have a real clear picture here. They're building short-term and long-term goals of their own. Another aspect of Berry Up is the community care. So we're doing things to help build engagement. We are getting people involved and seeking that representation, you know, part of that work is, is the work that we've already been doing, kind of, you know, wearing two hats here, rainbow bridge work with the canvassing and the community engagement that we have, we're trying to build that energy into Berry Up as well, make sure that our most vulnerable people have a voice. Our website is up and running, we do have a monthly newsletter, that's, that's awesome, and that's going out already, so there are ways to stay in touch with what we're doing and what's coming and what our needs are. So, any questions?
There's some answers, I'll start with Councilor Dean, then back to Councilor Talkwell.
Sean, could you explain a little bit more about the MOU, the MOU that you guys have with Restore and Resource?
I think I made a mistake, it's Shawna, right?
Sean?
Shawna or Shawna?
Shawna.
Okay, either way.
Whatever you'd like. Let's see, yeah, so we have an MOU with Restore, Rebuild, it's a case and month basis, so Berry Up, again, assuming the funding that we predict falls into line, which right now we're looking at $115,000 that is committed, it's not in the bank yet, but we're really hopeful it's coming. So that money is scheduled, it's per job, per month, and per team, so basically Berry Up will be paying the youth build, I think, I want to say it's $3,000 per team, per month. I can get you the numbers to be more exact, but that's what fits into our budget with the numbers that we've just, with the numbers that I've just given you.
So it'll be youth build, children that'll be fixing those houses?
Under the direction of their supervision team and in coordination with construction manager, you know, that's been hired by Berry Up, who is also responsible for making sure the proper permits are pulled, et cetera, and making sure there's no gaps in that respect.
Okay. I had another question regarding the leadership team, you said recently you'd taken over with, from Amanda, how long ago was that?
It was never in the long-term plan for Amanda to be executive director because of the work that she does, and she wants to, you know, be very clear and avoid any conflict of interest. We just had a vote on this on Friday, so just to. Uh, we just had a vote on this on Friday, so just a few days ago, where I became the Executive Director, and Amanda is now chairing the data team. And she's also continuing to help with the grant work and all that stuff, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Councilor Stockwell?
I was wondering how you're selecting houses, assuming, I'm assuming that many, many people would like your services. So, but I also wanted, and when you're, when you're rebuilding, are you making sure that the houses are going to be flood resilient? If not floodproof?
Is that a thing? We, so as I mentioned, um, we are in the process of cleaning up the data, consolidating, investigating, you know, building a, a single source. But the short answer is, our information is still coming from crisis cleanup. A lot of these jobs have come from crisis cleanup from the beginning. Uh, some of these jobs have been folks calling in or reporting to us and requesting our services. But a good starting point was crisis cleanup and, and and the various ways that we collected data in the beginning. You know, it was a little Wild West there for a minute, so we had all kinds of spreadsheets with our mutual aid teams and the city and crisis cleanup. So there's that, and then there's been people reaching out to get some of this work done.
Crisis cleanup's the two-on-one.
The crisis cleanup, yes, and that was the software that we were all using. At least, maybe not in the very beginning, but at some point during the flood recovery, you know, all of our two-on-one data was feeding into crisis cleanup. So, exactly. Um, and that's, those are good launching points, but again, we're in the process of cleaning that up and getting a real nice, uh, build, a map that we can use for future projects. In addition to that, like I said, we're just trying to build, um, awareness of the project and get people to realize that it is an option to give us a call. If it's something that's beyond our scope, we're happily referring folks to Hope Coalition. You know, it's been discussed here in council, the work that they're doing. And, um, if it's, if it's beyond our scope for now, that's what's happening. But again, eventually, the, the goal is to be able to meet those needs, especially for the demographics that we're looking at. So for instance, Hope Coalition is working with a lot of owner-occupied spaces, and we're really prioritizing tenants and more vulnerable people. But that adds an extra layer of complication to it. And so, for that reason and the reason of permitting and all that that means, with flood, you know, resiliency for the future and requirements, that's part of the reason why this work, um, we're not rushing it. We're not rushing it. We're not interested in, um, doing it twice or causing more headache or pain for people down the road. So we're taking our time and we're doing what we can right now with volunteer labor groups for things that don't require permits, you know, really low-stake stuff. And then eventually, we plan on being, um, you know, in conjunction with the youth build, uh, leadership and our construction manager, there's safeguards there to make sure that our, um, permits are in place.
Mr. Deering?
Yeah, um, so what's your caseload right now?
So we've seen, we've had about 50 people so far since we've been up and running. We have 25 flood-affected homes, I mentioned a few minutes ago, that are, that are able to utilize our services. They've all been contacted. Not necessarily the work has begun, but that's a good, uh, number for the households that were flood-affected. In addition to the 50, when I say that number, I'm talking about a lot of case management type work. People coming forward and needing help with the applications or connecting to the resources that exist out there.
People that want to help, how would they get in contact with you and while getting in contact with you, also people that need your services, how would they get in contact with the hours are, just a little plug for?
So the best way is probably to get online. Berryup.org is our website. I mentioned we do have a monthly newsletter that's going out. Uh, we have an email address at info@berryup.org. If you needed services, that would be a good place to start. We do, we just got a phone number, uh, yesterday, so I'm sorry, but I don't have it on me, but I'll make sure I get it in the minutes. But, um, our hours are actually under construction right now. We're taking the week off for holiday and we're strategizing what we want to do going forward as far as the days of the week and the hours. You know, up until now, it's been every Wednesday, six to eight. But obviously, we want to diversify those options and expand. It's just simply, it's a, it's a matter of getting some volunteer participation in that respect. But also a matter of optimizing. It's a matter of optimization, you know, certain, our schedules and all that. The Wednesday thing kind of fit for us in the beginning. That's what worked for people. But I think, um, with some optimization, we can find some more days and hours that work for more people and we can expand what we can do.
Also, you had mentioned that Amanda had stepped down. Who's currently on the leadership team right now?
Myself as Executive Director, um, Lee McCaffrey of the Berry Congregational Church fame. She's our treasurer. Um, it's also in her, it's also was never a part of the long-term plan that she would remain in that position. So we do have someone, uh, she has a connection in the, in the wings waiting. So her role will likely be replaced in the next month or so as well. That's actually it for the board. And then in addition to that, we have the steering committee that remains, which is Amanda, Nicholas, City Manager, Stephanie, Keith from Salvation Army, Adam Jacobs, the volunteer coordinator, um, so. Those are the core of our team, yeah. That's our core of our team.
Thank you.
And we're always open to more, like, for instance, you know, we have our new housing liaison Tess, right, for the city employees. So she started to come and, um, communicate with us. So we're definitely planning on more collaboration with her and, and other people and community that are interested in this kind of thing.
Before, if I could jump ahead of you, Councilor Deering, um, one thing that I've been curious about is, I mean, there's obviously a lot happening across a lot of different organizations, like the great BPR press for, the, I'm sorry, the Hope, it's called the Hope Coalition?
Yep.
Yeah, and then the Housing Task Force, the Recovery Fund, what's happening at the city level and the State Recovery Office. And there's a lot of data that everybody holds. And, and I think one of the challenges of the, um, that probably council's gonna face in the coming months, maybe, maybe longer, maybe six months to a year, are those, the buyout decisions and thinking how to be strategic about, uh, which properties are, are bought out and which ones are made more flood resilient. And, and, uh, we're supporting those households to, uh, to, to bring those households, housing units back online. So, like, do you feel like there's a, like, there's a good coordination, communication among all those organizations? And that, that you're getting good, good data from the people who have it, um, to be able to really identi-, pinpoint what individual flood-impacted households need? Like, is there a good inventory of what flood-impacted households need in the city?
Well, as a good rule of thumb, I'm never really satisfied with the amount of collaboration that's happening on planet Earth. However, I am very confident in the data team that we have at Berry Up. Um, we're not just talking about people that are interested or curious. We're talking about professionals in the field of data who have a lot of real-world experience in this. We just got access to, um, or access was just shared in the past couple of days with them. And they're already starting to get to work on making their plans. And they've already set short and long-term goals for creating that. And to go back to collaboration, it absolutely can be improved and will be improved. We're not interested in doing anything alone, one for the sake of efficiency, two for the sake of, you know, diminishing replication, duplication of services. You know, we're not interested in doing that kind of stuff either. Uh, we're interested in a very sustainable and holistic health, you know, return for the folks of Berry that were impacted by the flood. And we know that we're not gonna get that without, um, collaborating in really robust ways. And we're really inspired by all of the community partners and, and all the organizations that are doing the work that they're doing. And, you know, we want to be a part of that, too.
To what extent will the data be like, uh, uh, open and available and what's protected for privacy reasons?
So we have a cursory data management and privacy, um, policy right now. But a part of the data team is to build a really comprehensive one. So that's a little bit of an unknown at this point. Obviously, anything that's public right now will, will remain public. But, um, some of this, uh, none of this is proprietary or anything like that. But the short answer is that we're still building a privacy policy that really addresses all of the concerns that we have and the folks utilizing our services have. So more to come.
In, in terms of the relationship for the space, is there a lease agreement or MOU?
There is a lease agreement, and it's in, in effect until May at this point.
Okay. Councilor Deering?
Sean, you said you guys were working on some pretty good data. And I'm just curious how many people are currently without heat or electricity that you know of?
Well, we keep hearing a rumor that there's 50 homes in Berry that don't have heat, although the source of that data is shrouded, is a little mysterious. So that is the best number that I have.
So 50 homes, can you?
That number doesn't come from us. That's what we've heard, uh, that the state has identified. Um, and again, I don't know the veracity of that number. But I think it's a good, a good number to energize us to get to work.
So is there a way that we can get you and Nicholas and maybe the Community Relief Fund to get together to make sure these people have heat and electricity? I mean, there's a decent amount of money that the Berry's Community Relief Fund is sitting on. They're still taking applications, and if there are 50 places out there that need these things, it's cold out. People are gonna start going places or dying. When we see that, that's when we're gonna really start acting. So if there's a way that we can kind of, you know, collaborate together and get this done, let me know how I can help.
Thank you. I'm definitely interested in that and, um.
Mr. Custodian of the 50, is that the Governor's office?
It's the state's Chief Recovery Office. So I've, I've talked to Pat about this. I think there's some issues with privacy again on this data. Uh, the source of the data is a survey that the state did. And they got, and that, that's the responses they got from Berry. So I know Doug's mentioned this when he's been here. He and I, of course, Pat and I corresponded on it, uh, and I, I know that there's some, some data issue, some data privacy issues.
This was new data aside from the stuff that Doug had talked about?
No, no, this is, this is Doug's data, yeah.
Sean, do you have any additional data that could help us figure out what's going on?
That's a big question, you know, there's a lot going on out there. I have, you know, anecdotal.
I guess I'm asking from the data collection that the organization has done, or, or the stuff that you guys talk about, what do you know and how can we help get those resources where they need to be?
So the data we've collected has been pretty limited to the 50 folks that I mentioned we're doing case management work with already, people that have reached out.
That's the 50 that are identified from the state?
None of this, different 50, as in 50 people that have contacted Berry Up. So that's our data.
Okay.
The rest of the data is data that we're gathering, you know, gleaning from all the sources that are out there. What you can do is, um, make sure that people know, raise awareness, please let them know that we're here. Let your constituents know that there is, yes, there's, there is lots of ways to find help in the city and they, they don't all do exactly the same thing. So make sure that your constituents know that there is a resource out there and it's right at Six North Main Street in City Hall at Berry Up. Because what we're doing, um, is a little bit different from all the other, from the energies, for instance, that Hope Coalition is doing too, you know? So.
So you have 50 additional individuals, or 50 additional homes from the 50 that Doug Farnham had identified. Do you know, out of how many of those 50 need heat or, or water or, or electric, uh, electricity?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Or if I did, I, it would be under my, under privacy stuff for now, for now.
I see, I see a couple of people's hands up online in the order. It was Heather Slaton, Joelle Mulvaney, then Pam Wilson. Heather Slaton?
Thanks, Jake. Um, I just want to say in the same vein of what Shawna is saying, around funding and support for the folks that don't currently have heat. We also have a grant from the Vermont Community Foundation, and that money is specifically to help community members, not exclusive to the people that we currently serve. Help, um, replace items from flooding and to help regain or maintain their housing in a safe way. And so we also can help collaborate with you folks to help with the heating. So if you know of people who do have electricity but don't have heat, and we can work on a way with you to help figure out how to make that happen. So say they have a functioning heating system, but no oil. We can help work on how to pay for that. If they have oil but not a functioning heating system, we can work on that with. So we also have funding. So it sounds like maybe we all need to sit down together and look at how to identify those people. And we've also seen the report from the Energy Audit. So maybe we all need to just sit down together and look at what we've got for funding and identify those folks and figure out how to help them.
Thanks, Heather. And when you say we, you're referring to Washington County Mental Health Services?
Yeah, well, it, I am managing the grant.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Heather. Uh, Joelle Mulvaney?
It seems like Pam is, uh, going to direct her comments to this particular topic, and I'm gonna introduce a different one.
Okay.
Pam should go first.
Pam Wilson?
Um, so I, I am Pam Wilson. I'm also on the board of Berry Up. Um, and I wanted to, um, to, to piggyback on the comment that Heather made about heat. So one of the, so in regards to the folks who we at Berry Up have been working with, I think we can feel pretty confident saying everyone that we've engaged with has an option for heat, whether it's, at this point, they're staying someplace that is heated. We've been able to get them a space heater and winterization supplies. There's nobody who we've come across so far, to my knowledge, that is currently without heat or basic resources. So we have been able to make plans and work with residents to figure out some kind of in-the-moment solution, even if it's not the long-term rebuild, permanent solution for housing that they're, they're ultimately trying to move towards. What Heather mentioned in her description of maybe someone has a furnace but no heating oil, one of the things, um, to speak to Councilor Deering's question, if it was as simple as there was one solution that would work for all families or for all households, that would be something that we would be able to work towards in a really efficient way. But that's not really what we have going on right now. In the same way that, you know, the, the, I, no 50 houses are built the same. We have, we have homes here that all have slightly different paths to getting heat back on. And so at Berry Up, one of the things we've been working towards is helping each resident understand, okay, here are the, here's, here's the roadblocks between you and getting your heat on, or here's the roadblocks between you and getting, uh, getting the electricity or getting the home habitable. And here's what each benchmark is gonna look like moving forward. So for some people, it's navigating permitting. For some people, it's figuring out they're electrical and then they can get their heat put in. Like, there's, I wish that it were as simple as 50 homes means we get 50 furnaces and boom, we're ready to go and move forward. It's a little bit different for each unit, and so the, um, so the work of pulling together what are the heating resources and then, um, what's the budget? And then the materials and the labor that's gonna do that. Right now, we're, with the folks that we're supporting, we're kind of taking them through, what is your unique rebuild or heating or electrification plan for your property? And how do we support you to get through each of those steps? Because it's, um, anybody who's worked through a home construction project knows it's not, um, it's a process. So we're doing our best to make sure that everybody understands the steps in the process and that they're getting the informational and emotional support that they need to work through that. And also the financial resources support. Michael, you had spoken about the, um, the Community Relief Fund. And yeah, one of those resources that we do have is supporting people through filling out those applications and then connecting them with the contractor lists and permitting, um, information to. information to move forward from there. So it's, it's all in process, and I wish it was a, wish it was simple. But at this point, we do have at least in-the-moment solutions for folks who are working without, without heat who've approached us. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Pam. Back to Joelle, and then I'll go to Booton, and then Representative Peter Anthony.
I'm having some tech difficulties. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just can't see anything. So Shauna, I, I really want to commend you and the folks working on Berry Up. I think it's, it's very helpful and obviously very needed. I wondered, Shauna, if you knew about the Berry Equity Impact Assessment Tool?
No, I do not.
So I, I'd like to introduce it to your group, actually, not just you and to just as well. Perhaps we could do, we have a couple of folks on our committee. This is the, the Justice Committee. So we have a few folks who could actually talk about how to use it. It's very valuable in terms of, you know, assessing whatever is happening, whatever your policies are, and what your plans are going to be, to include the community in a, in a very direct way in terms of equity. So I'm, I'm going to offer that also as help, and I can put that together for you. I, I think I have your email, so I can just email you about that, if that's of your interest.
Thank you, Joelle.
Regarding people with issues with their heating, is any of that because they have to bring the panels up and the furnaces up?
Well, again, like Pam mentioned, it's not really the people that have approached us that are missing heat. But it is our understanding, just anecdotally, I can share with you, yeah, there's a certain amount of that. I can't give you a number, though.
So it's something we should probably consider putting a kibosh on.
It's so multi-factored. It's so multi-factored with the moving up and the shortage of supply for contractors, materials, the cost of it, et cetera, the bandwidth of the people undergoing it to get it done. It's so multi-factored.
Some of those electrical changes are linked to being enrolled in the National Flood Insurance Program. If we don't follow federal rules that are administered locally, then those people could end up losing their flood insurance. So there's some rules that we control, and then some rules that are really mandated by federal regulations. Representative Peter Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm just so pleased about the progress of Berry Up. All I can do is assure the council that the legislative delegation is working mightily hard to figure out how not only to put our finger in the dyke with the education taxes that are not collected but owed, but also the longer term issue of saying, well, you know, the people of Berry don't deserve a 19 or 20% hike in the property tax. So what are we going to do to sort of smooth that curve and help rebuild the grand list? And I'm acutely aware of that. But as the ED, newly minted ED of Berry Up has pointed out, none of this, if it were obvious, it would be already a front page headline, and we'd all be on board. But it's not simple. It, it's going to take time. It's going to involve multiple characters, the state, the federal. If we can find some federal money, great, but it may involve, how shall I say, bringing along the executive branch to finding some new revenues, which is, is not an easy pull, as you may have imagined. It's, the legislature has been very good at plugging holes and finding uncommitted revenues. But I'll tell you what, most people understand that between this year and next, never mind the flood, we had already committed most of the money that came, compliments of ARPA and so on. So we really are trying to figure out how to locate new revenues and, and find a way around the administration's general dislike of new, new taxes and new fees. So that's going to be a struggle, and it's going to be a negotiation. But we're acutely aware of Barry, Montpelier, Cabot, Hardwick, Ludlow, Springfield, Middlebury. I mean, Barry is not alone, nor Montpelier, in having a real serious fiscal crunch just because of the grand list and the unbudgeted expenditures, which I, I think we, people should be proud of. I mean, Barry just said, we got to do this because it's the right thing to do. We don't have the money, but we'll figure it out. So why should anybody get, feel down in the mouth or beat up about it? I mean, that's, that's what you mean, that's what you do when you're protecting the public health and welfare of the citizens of Berry. That's what you do. And then we'll figure out how to pay for it later. Anyway, I, I really am, am so inspired by Berry Up and all their work. And Jonathan and I will do what we can to try and find some money. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks so much. And that's a preview, you mentioned a preview for another item on the agenda tonight, which is looking at kind of basically level funding the budget, and then still facing down a prospective 19% increase in the tax rate if we don't get state, state funding aid. And at the same time, the other item on the agenda is how to do outreach for the Gateway area, project area for the north end. But broader than that, you know, we're going to have to make a lot of buyout decisions, both within that area and outside that area. And I think like one of the data sets that I think would really help, and I like to make decisions based off data, help this council make, make those decisions, is knowing where households now, where do they want to be. And maybe that's right where they are, but maybe that's an apartment, maybe that's in a condo, maybe that's in a comparable single-family home, maybe it's in Tennessee. But without having just an overall snapshot, even of anonymized data of where households are, I don't, I don't know how we really create a redevelopment and clear housing strategy. So I'm hoping that we can continue these conversations with all the people who are doing awesome work, and absolutely appreciate the work you're doing. I hope you get that $100,000 from the Vermont Community Foundation, and you're able to get that construction manager on board quickly. And, and so much appreciation for, at this point, probably thousands of volunteer hours that have been given to the people of the city of Berry to help, to help them meet their needs. Councillor Dearing?
Sean, when you come back, can you just bring us some statistics on what's going on? The mayor mentioned the thousands of hours of volunteer hours, and we really want to recognize those. Is it possible that you can also come back to us with the case numbers that you have, possibly the case numbers that you've closed, potentially the number that need heat or electricity, the numbers that need contractors, and if possible, also the amount, the amount of money that you guys are raising, as well as the amount of money you guys are putting back into the community? It would just be really helpful for me.
Be happy to.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. If there are no further questions, this is a great, great update. Ellen Kay?
Hello, Ellen Kay, East Street, Berry. I also want to commend everybody who's done all of this incredible volunteer work from the day after the flood up until now. But I also want to say that it should not be the responsibility of hard-working community members who sacrifice their time and their lives for this to carry the brunt of it. It's very easy to let a nonprofit organization take it all on, and also to make incredible demands of them. So I just want us to be balanced, to remember that this was a natural disaster, a climate change-fueled natural disaster, that, that, as Peter Anthony spoke up, we need to lean on our legislature, on our governor, on the federal government, and not allow, not just wash our hands while the good volunteers of Berry do all of the heavy lifting. So thank you for all your work, but let's not let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, that'll take us in this item, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
Well, it takes us to our consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. We have approval of the minutes of the regular, regular city council meeting of Tuesday, November 7, 2023. We have the ratification of the warrants of the week of November 15, 2023, approval of the city warrants from the week of November 22, 2023. Do we have licenses and permits?
Nope.
None for that. We're going to ratify our October 24 approval of an assurance of discontinuent settlement with the Agency of Natural Resources. We're going to approve, hopefully, two state revolving loan fund applications for the wastewater treatment plant, and we're going to approve a resolution for lead service inventory. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councillor Stockwell, seconded by Councillor Sean Bell. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The House has it. The motion carries, consent agenda is adopted.
And I'm going to pass around the documents for the, for the revolving loan fund, loan. And the first two pages require your signatures. The first three pages require yours, so.
First two pages, first three pages, go.
Lots of signatures, huh? Yes, where it says, where it says the majority of the, yeah. Sign again.
He's going to give you a pen here pretty soon.
Literally.
So that takes us to your report, Clerk Trezor-Dos.
Yes. Just a few things. We had our second quarter property tax collection, which was, the deadline was last Wednesday, the 15th. Our percentage of delinquency is 5.7, which is a little higher than, than what we've, than what we usually aim for. I try to keep us under 5%. We were 5.7 also with the first quarter installment. I think some of that is probably tied to the number of abatement requests that we have, where people are waiting to hear the results of their abatement requests. So, but, but the second quarter has come and gone. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that the parking team met yesterday, and we were talking about, one of the things that we're going to bring to council at our next meeting is a proposal for setting up a Park Mobile Zone to charge for parking at our EV charging stations out back here. Right now, we're not charging for using the stations or parking in the spaces, and we're incurring expenses associated with the electricity. So what we're, what we're going to be proposing is establishing our parking meters, currently our parking meters are a dollar an hour. To park at the parking meters, we're going to propose $2 an hour to park at and use the EV charging stations. We'll set it up as a Park Mobile on, on the Park Mobile app, so people will be able to, to use that, to, to make the, to park there and, and use the charging stations. So I mentioned that tonight because I wanted to give councilors an opportunity to think about whether that's something that, that you would support, or whether there will be questions when it comes up to the council for consideration at our next meeting in two weeks, so.
Stroll poll.
Yeah, yeah. There's a hand, there's an approval.
Yeah, no, I definitely approve using Park Mobile for that. But the question that I have, are we going to increase our fees for violations?
Yes, there will, it'll be higher than just the standard meter has expired, so, yeah.
Significantly?
An expired meter is $12. We're proposing 25 for, for being...
19% is getting lower and lower.
For being at the, oh no, we, we figured all those in already. That's part of the found revenue, so. Are there other questions?
So are there places nearby you can, you can charge your car for free that are close by?
I don't know. I don't know. I know that there are EV charging stations. There's one over Metro Way, a double-headed one over in Metro Way, and I'm not sure, I feel like there's one other in the city, but I can't think of where it is at this stage of the game. Excuse me? Oh, yeah, yep, you're right, the Domino's Plaza, there's one around the corner there, so.
So isn't it likely that people just use the free stations?
I, I don't know, but I know that it's costing us hundreds of dollars a year in electricity that...
To keep them functioning?
To, because people come and park there and charge their cars up for free. So, and they're, they're, so it's costing us money, and we're losing the, the parking revenue. So it's a combination.
Okay.
My take is that that's fair, particularly now that the market's building more, and it's easier and easier to do in-home charging, and there are the grants for the multifamily EDSC electric vehicle supply equipment. So seems like we helped nudge the, we did our part to help nudge the electric market along, and, and now it's fair for people to pay their way.
And the hope is that, you know, if somebody does, right now, we've got cars that park there all day. And they may not need all day to charge, but if they're, they're paying for it, the, the hope actually is that they'll cycle out of those spaces once they've fully charged and move into a space that's less costly for parking, to free the space up for the next electric vehicle that needs to charge.
Councillor Moon?
Would the $2 an hour cover the electricity?
Yes.
And then some?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the dollar an hour will cover the electricity, and then the other dollar an hour is the parking fee that, that we're charging for everywhere else, so.
One question I had is, what was the logic behind only allowing quarters now in the parking meters?
It has to do with the fact that the, the programming for the parking meters themselves, they have, we have to rent the machine that goes around, that you have to go around to program them all. And they, the newer versions of those machines only work in certain denominations. So we went to the, so it was, yeah. So it, it's more cost-effective for us to have just one standardized unit of coinage.
Are there any other questions for the city clerk or treasurer? All right. Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to our liquor and cannabis control boards. I don't think we have any items, right?
Nothing.
Okay. So number nine, city managers report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. We are expanding use of the ice at the BOR. This one's near and dear to my heart. We started stick and puck this vacation. We're going to continue it into December. We're going to do it during Christmas vacation. We had great turnout today, 30 kids on the ice. And this is not just revenue, but this is getting the ice active and busy and keeping kids, giving kids something to do. So really exciting. There's one more for this vacation, which we split up for the little kids and the older kids. So schedule's on the website. So encourage folks, parents looking for somewhere to take their kids on Friday, BOR is a good spot, and we'll have some more dates in December for that as well. There's Free COVID Vaccine Clinic happening at the People's Health and Wellness, starting on Saturday, and it's every Saturday through the end of the year. This will be happening at their offices on 51 Church Street, and it's open to anyone 18 plus who does not have health insurance, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM every Saturday till the end of the year. So get your shots. The, the new variant is, is no joke. The, just reminder on the winter parking ban, it is in effect. It has been in effect since November 15. Still seeing some cars parked on the streets, and they're going to start getting probably towed based on the snow we're supposed to get. So, so just that reminder that it is, it is, it is in effect. Violers will be ticketed and towed. And just a reminder that it's unlawful to deposit snow into city streets when you start shoveling this, this winter. Council, we all received an update today from Clayton Clark about the GM of Green Mountain Transit about restoration of services. Last month, the council joined the GMT board meeting requesting restorations of services. As, as you know, we, GMT decided to add a 5:30 AM route to the city commuter, and they chose not to add the 7:30 PM route. and they chose not to add the 7:30 PM route. They are planning to get back to 30-minute service around December 4th based on their staffing. So just sharing that update with the public. And then just a, another, just a sort of a standard-setting note. Janet, last week, received notification that FEMA and V M closed out the Hilltop Street buyouts after nine years. So just a reminder that it takes that long. It's, it's a, it's a process. We're in this for the long haul. I know there's many residents who are struggling with the buyout process, and I understand it because it's their home. But just a reminder that this, this takes a while. We're ahead of the game, even though it may not feel that way. And so just a standard-setting comment. And then finally, I just want to thank AOT. You know, today, we negotiated with them to delay the final big, big debt service payment that was due in December. They've agreed to delay it for, postpone it for two additional years, so we won't have to pay for two years. That's $103,000 in cash flow help for us, which is a preview to tonight's budget conversation. So just really want to help, thank Secretary Flynn, who, you know, when we approached him about it, said, you know, no problem. We're getting, we're waiting to sign the executions on that. So really want to thank AOT. In particular, has done a lot. They did a volunteer day here in this, you know, which was important. This, this is a real big one. This is 100, almost $104,000 that we won't have to pay out for two years to help us with our cash flow issues, so.
With no interest accumulation?
No interest accumulation.
Yes.
That's it for me.
Any questions? Yeah, Councilor Dern?
A question for you or maybe Jeff. Is there an open gym scheduled this vacation?
I haven't seen it yet, but I can check and get back here with them.
Sure. If there's not, let me know, and I'll be more than happy to help get one done.
If there isn't, there's usually the Sunday evenings, 8:00 or by the moon clock. It's open to anybody, I think from 5:30 to 6:30, something around that.
Which also had about, almost 100 kids at the last one, I believe. Very well attended.
Yeah. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, that takes us to our first item of new business. We have a volunteer application for appointment to the Development Review Board as the at-large appointee, Kendall Schmidt. Welcome.
I'm Kendall Schmidt, and I'd like to be on the board.
Well, thanks, Will. Would you, do you could just go and tell us a little bit about what, what interests you about the Development Review Board?
Well, I'm actually new to Vermont, new to Barry. I've been here for a year, and I'd just like to get to know about stuff that's going on. And, yeah, I've 32 years at the Postal Service as a letter carrier. And, yeah, I just want to get involved in the, in the community.
Great.
It's something that I feel like I want to do. So, and this is a good step to, to start, to get on the board.
Absolutely. And one of the things we ask all appointees, and particularly for the Development Review Board, because there's so many notification timelines, is if you're willing to commit to notifying the planning director, if you're, you're going to be absent, that way there's no issues with quorum in making a decision.
Well, I'm retired, so I have plenty of time to do, do everything. Just home all the time, so, yeah, I have plenty of time to do whatever needs to be done.
Thanks. Councilor Dern, then Councilor Stockwell.
So there are many opportunities within the city to volunteer and be a civil servant. What brought you to the D R B or the Development Review Board in particular?
Linda.
So was there something that Linda had said to you that you felt was important or really caught your eye or felt your heart?
She said that they needed somebody to, on the board. And so I thought, you know, that'd be a good place to start, is to get on the board.
And do you know what the board does?
It's a development request, yeah. So they're asking, you know, what, people are coming in to find out what they need to do to get developed, you know, to develop the community, I'm guessing. I really don't know, because I, I'm not, I've never been in this situation before.
No worries, no worries. Thanks, sir.
That was my question.
Well, and I'm sure as a postal service employee, you're very used to following rules and regulations, even those you may disagree with, but, but the rule of law and giving people due process and respecting their property rights, right?
Absolutely.
Councilor Booton?
Well, if Linda's recommending you, how long you been on the board, Linda?
About five years.
That's it? Feel like it's been longer. It's been a long five years. It's been a really long five years.
I've been chair for about two years now.
So.
It's a very interesting and educating board to be on. And I've only known Kendall for a short period of time, but he was, I think I was the first one to introduce myself to him, because he happened to be outside. And he was very receptive, offering help to neighbors. And I just think he's going to be a wonderful addition to the board, and we really need that kind of experience that he can bring.
Well, with that endorsement, I will make a motion to approve and appoint.
There's a motion and a second if there's no further discussion or questions from you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Well, thank you so much for signing up to serve. And I'm sure the manager and the planning director will be in touch to get you oriented.
Congratulations.
So that takes us to item B, the North End Recovery and Resiliency Update. We have three sub-items, and we're going to begin with a discussion of council housing strategy. And I, I meant to note during the manager's report, just the volume of work that's represented in this packet is very substantial.
This was a big one.
And appreciation for that.
Thank you.
Number one, sir?
Number one. So, thank you, Mayor. And I, Pat Moltman, Tess are here, who I'm sure can, can jump in as well on this subject. But starting off with slide one, just sort of setting a baseline of what, what the housing need is. We've talked a lot about this, so I think it's just good to have a reminder about exactly what the metrics are. Approximately 4,000 households in the city, 18,000 owner occupied, slightly more than that, rentals. And this is data from, that's, that's from the White House, the Housing Task Force White Paper, which I told Tess I've used, I can't tell her how many times I've used it since it was published. So there were 154 fewer households in Barry in 2019 than 2010, so obviously trending in the wrong direction. Housing development, this is, we all know this, the development's just not keeping up with the demand. And, and as a, you know, this is a, sort of a newer data point. But this spring, as we all remember, when the General Assistance Program was expiring, we had 223 households at risk of homelessness. So that's maybe, you know, an imperfect proxy for a very immediate need of people in our, in our county who don't have a place to go. And of course, this was all made much, much worse by the floods in July, where 363 structures were impacted in some way. As I've mentioned, the 363 is the whole gamut, right? So this is a complete destruction on the north end, and it's also, I got a little water in my basement, right? So that's, that's what the 363 is. But when you break it down, you can see there's some trend lines emerging. We expect closer to the 50 homes, I would say at this point, to be substantially damaged. Those determinations will be done next, middle of next week. We have two homes already lost to landslides and several additional ones at risk, and about 40 applications for buyouts. So you can see we're in the several dozen range of additional homes seriously at risk after the, the July floods. Again, trending in the wrong direction. Next slide, slide three. These are some data points from housingdata.org, which show that housing crunch is, is tough in Vermont. It's especially tough in Barry. We are more affordable than many other communities, but it's, it's becoming increasingly, increasingly difficult for many to have stable housing. One of those factors, of course, is median income. We tend to have a lower median income than the rest of the state and many surrounding communities. You can see there on the chart. And the housing costs as percent of household income in Barry also tend to be higher than statewide and also compared to our neighbors as well. So housing is a, is a, is becoming, like I said, even as affordable, as, as affordable as it is compared to other communities, still difficult within Barry City for other reasons. And, and when we start talking about housing strategies for the council, you know, there's, there's been a lot of good starting points. This isn't, this certainly won't be the first discussion, won't be the last discussion. The housing, as I mentioned, referenced earlier, Tess's group, the Housing Task Force, did a needs assessment, and they, they came out with some pretty clear goals, which I'll run down here real quickly. One was to provide timely and ongoing support to the homeless in Barry. You can see some, I won't go through these specific actions, but you can see we've made some progress. I think this council, last year for the first time, added $6,000 in the budget for warming shelter. That's a recurring commitment that we've made. It was paid out of ARPA, now is a part of our, our standing budget. Goal number two was increase the number of ADUs, which the council acted on recently at the, finalized at the November 7th meeting. Goal three was to improve the value, efficiency, and safety of existing homes. We've got some of that through Efficiency Vermont. Unfortunately, it has, it's as a result of the devastating floods, but there, there are some programs to help people with that. Build more housing of all types, and all types was their capitalization. That wasn't mine. So that, I think that was for, for deep emphasis from them. And so there's, I think there's some, some positive actions on that front. C V R P C is working on vacant lots data for infill development. You know, we're working with, I sit on the Prospect Heights Development Board as appointed by the council, which is working with employers like C V M C, like the school district, for diverse housing at Prospect Heights. We sold 22 Hill Street to Central Vermont Habitat, which will create an affordable home. And of course, the council approved $250,000 to Downstreet to support the creation of nine perpetually affordable apartments. So there's definitely been some progress. Again, not enough to keep up with the demand, but, but I think some real positive things that have been done by the council. Goal, the next goal was increase the percentage of owner-occupied homes. And then finally, looking at an enforcement of landlord-tenant laws. So that was from the Housing Task Force. Our strategic plan also touched on housing, I think appropriately. This was goal one of the strategic plan. And that was to, it's said to keep Barry affordable for residents by developing a strong and diversified financial base that grows the grand list. And strategy one of goal one was to prioritize the development of a wide range of housing options as a core component of our economic development strategy. And some of the, these will, you'll see themes emerging here, if you haven't already. You know, within strategy one, the things that were listed in the strategic plan were to stimulate infill development, stimulate housing development, and strengthen the existing housing stock. So certainly a lot of themes starting to emerge from, from the work that's been done in the past. So now moving to slide six, this is where we get to, these are all ideas submitted by councilors. I've done some very light editing for, you know, sort of to fit things on, in categories and for wording, but this is really, these are your words that I, I hope I've captured appropriately, and I've tried to sort into categories to, to help the discussion. We had a submission of challenges of housing development, which I think are, I think pretty straightforward. Again, the development costs are, are key and not unique to us. We already referenced the lower median income. The construction industry capacity is a challenge. We've, we've certainly found that here at City Hall, just trying to get, do our repairs for the flood. Flood zone designation, which we unfortunately lived through very recently. We have a, a higher tax rate, and unless we get help, it's, that's not going to get any better. And competitive municipal environment. There's also, just as there's challenges, there's opportunities, which is high demand. We have a robust permitting process. There's excess water and sewer capacity in Barry. Barry is ready for development. Barry can take on development today. There's lots of tax credits, tax stabilization financing programs to help make development possible, and we're politically competitive, and that was described as we have the attention of state government, unfortunately, to the, to the impacts of the, of the flood. And then just noting some very specific and tangible development ideas that are present. Councilor Loweslan's not here, but at a recent council meeting, he, he talked about development on a municipal lot, and, oh, Mayor, you've mentioned that he suggested a specific one. We're talking, you know, Pat's here to talk about the North End mitigation and resiliency, which includes housing. And of course, I referenced Prospect Heights earlier, which I'm a member of the board and is an active concept as well. So then, I don't know if it's helpful for me to go through, there's a lot of things here. You know, I've tried to sort of put them into buckets where I thought they fit, and, and, you know, certainly if they need to be moved around or consolidated, I think there's a good time to do that here today or, or to just get general themes. But councilor submitted a range of, of ideas here, and I've bucketed them into policy changes. Many of these relate to zoning requirements. And so you can see the list here. We, demolition criteria stood out as well. We've, we've recently had to deal with that as a result of the flood as well. We had some ideas related to private-public partnerships for housing, which includes things like issuing an RFP for downtown development on identified sites. That could include a parking lot, for example. Moving on to the next page, we had also had several ideas for data collections and studies. Again, another reference in here to inventories of city-owned lots, which C V R P C is, is starting to get, working on. There's some planning projects as well. One that came up, and I talked with Tess briefly today, was about designation of eligible zoning districts as neighborhood development areas. Moving on to the final page, I'm sorry, not the final page, the next page. There were submissions related to budget and governance. I think the key one here that's also been discussed previously is creation of an ARPA-funded revolving loan fund for flood recovery funding gaps, code repairs, and creation of new units. Another one, just to bring to your attention, is what do we do about the assessor position? So there was a suggestion for establishment of Board of Listers or to contract out the assessor position, and then elimination of the planner position to hire in-house economic development. There were some suggestions about communicating, communication and messaging, about broadly, you know, spreading the word about Barry being open, fair, inclusive, and ready. I think part of it is also ready, just like I mentioned, the sewer water capacity. We're at a better position than many other communities in that regard. And then on the, I believe, no, yeah, the last page of ideas is the infrastructure improvements, which again, I, I think these are some very, these are some pretty specific and targeted suggestions. I think, you know, we could take many of these and apply them to many other parts of the city that need similar types of improvements as well. They're, they're consistent themes for, for these needs throughout the city and other, other parts that are referenced here. So, turning to slide 11, you know, these are just guiding questions for me. They don't need to, the conversation certainly doesn't need to be limited to this. But I think, you know, some, some thoughts to consider, are there areas of consensus? I think certainly when you look at the, the Housing Task Force paper, you look at our strategic plan, and you look at the ideas submitted by council, I think there are certainly several themes that emerge across all three of those areas. You know, are there things that are missing? Is there something, or conversely, something that is, has no place in the document? You know, I think that's a, a topic as well, if there's going to be a discussion about strategies. And then I, I think really important is to identify the near, medium, and long-term priorities. This, there were, as you could tell, a lot of ideas. And, you know, I think priorities by definition need to be a little bit narrower than that. So, so what are the ones that are more immediate? What are the ones that are more medium? And then what are the long-term ones that, you know, that, that we spread out? Identifying key partners and their roles. I think several of them are here today. And then, of course, we can't get away from what is financially feasible. We're going to have a really difficult budget conversation in a little bit. And so I think part of identifying what the near, medium, and long-term priorities are, a lot of that is driven by what is financially feasible or not feasible. And then how flexible or rigid will these priorities be, right? So, trying to think back, a year ago, whether, you know, was Prospect Heights a concept really a year ago? I don't, I can't remember the exact timing of when it developed, but, you know, that might, that's, that wasn't on a priority list before, right? Because that was something that sort of emerged, newly emerged. So what if something emerges new that we don't know about yet, right? And so how flexible or rigid are we going to be? Are we going to be set to these? Are we going to be prepared to adapt from them? And how, you know, what's the elasticity of our flexibility in that sense? So just some guiding questions, again, don't need to limit the discussion to these. But that's, really wanted to share, you know, I think we got a broad set of ideas from the council. I certainly saw some themes emerge, but I'll turn it over to you, mayor. There's another, another way to take the conversation.
I think this is an excellent reboot of the, the council's housing working group with councillor Stockwell and councillor Lozon. I know it's too bad councillor Lozon couldn't be here tonight because I know this was a, this is a really important thing for him. And I think it recognizes the, the why behind this is that money follows competence, money follows readiness, and money avoids political friction. And what we're hearing and what we heard at the VCRD visit from multiple funders is that they want to see a consensus strategy for, for housing development in Berry. And that, and I understand that's coming from people like the Preservation Trust and the Vermont Housing Conservation Board and the Vermont Housing Finance Agency. And where I work, the Department of Housing Community Development, all of these funders in a fragmented system of housing funding want to see where, where Berry wants to focus. And, and really, for me, it all comes down to what's the lowest cost, nearest term, highest return investments? And we made good investments, but, you know, in terms of outcomes, we're not seeing, you know, a, a big unit production. And, and so, and recognizing that buyouts can take nine years, I think we need to start, if there's going to be avenues for flood-impacted households, to be able to say yes to a buyout, they need to have options and hopefully options if they want to stay here in Berry, to stay here in Berry. And so I think this is, in terms of like, this is a great start and we need to get to a point where we can vote out seven, zero. We're behind a strategy and it's going to flow into our budget and we can't, and it's got to be the, it's really got to be an administrative focus from the Planning Commission to the Development Review Board, from staff to run and working with partners across the city to run these plays and get new housing units online. Councillor Stockwell, did you have anything that, just being involved, so involved in housing and being such a champion for housing?
Well, I was thinking of what the city manager was saying about another opportunity might come up. We weren't expecting the state to come here with an opportunity. So yes, we need to take advantage of all the opportunities. We need to have a ton of plans, but we absolutely need to do the, the short-term plan first. We really need to say, okay, there are some city lots, let's sell them for a dollar. Let's give a priority to small developers first so that they have a chance to build. And I also think, you know, if we have some basic criteria, we can look at new plans in light of that criteria. If, if our criteria is inclusionary zoning, sure, build, you know, build whatever, but make sure that it's inclusionary zoning. It's not just for one group of people. Make sure that we're using, use of the infrastructure that already exists and not having to put in a new infrastructure. So if we have some criteria, I think to begin with, can we have an easy way to look at new opportunities that are coming in and say, does it fit these three, three basic criteria?
Thoughts, things that, responses to the questions or maybe things that you would take off the list?
Not one that I would take. You know, a couple of them. Thoughts, I think that, you know, we're going to have a conversation about lobbying and advocacy later tonight. But there are some, to your point, Mr. Mayor, you know, there, there are easier sells for getting funding and then there are harder ones. And I think that a lot of the infrastructure improvements, that seems like an easier sell to drawing down state funding than any given potential housing development. It's, it's very tangible, it's very real, it's, there's lots of precedent for, so I, I, I just think that that's one area that we can focus in getting and advocating for as many state funding direct aid as possible, which is going to be a drum that I continue to beat as we go through this, the North End redevelopment. And it's, you know, it's, it's great to have the attention of the state. We also need the dollars from the state to get all of these things moving. And then, you know, my two cents, the inclusive zoning or, you know, there's inclusive zoning and then there's just getting rid of unnecessary zoning. So I think that some low-hanging fruit would be making sure that we don't have exclusionary zoning, so that we're not saying that we can't do certain things in certain aspects of the city. We need to have all hands on deck approach here. And I think that I fully agree with councillor Stockwell's idea of just getting these municipally-owned lots out of municipal ownership and selling them for a dollar or 50 cents or a quarter or a penny and getting some of those projects. So those are some of my, as a non-development expert, those are some of my immediate takeaways.
Councillor Jerry?
That I was thinking about were our policy changes. And we talked about the Planning Commission, about relaxing the zoning requirements with density restrictions and opening those up so that we didn't have such tight density restrictions. Another one was incentivizing office space or commercial space to housing. And another one that I've been really looking into is limited tax stabilization. So essentially you build up and you get a limited tax stabilization base. So maybe only, given this tax stabilization for five years or maybe it's a 10-year. So it's not a full tax stabilization, but it's a temporary one where they get that short-term cash fix. Something they're doing down in your city.
So it'd probably be a policy thing for our tax stabilization policy.
Yep.
And so would be the density and the incentivizing. What do you mean by incentivizing office space? Are you talking about like mixed-use buildings?
So if you can incentivize, maybe J.J. Newberry's building, you can figure out a way that you can get some mixed use out of it, convert that old space into some, some housing units or maybe even some of the granite shed stuff that could be converted over. You know, there's a big push to do commercial housing conversions.
The other thing that's going to be coming up is the TIF. In terms of the timeline, we have until, for the Tax Increment Financing District, we're likely to seek a plan amendment, right? And we're likely to do that.
We have to, we're required to.
Okay, on what timeline?
Well, on, working backwards, we have to incur the last debt by March, the end of March of '26, which means that we would need to go to the voters probably at a special election November of '25, which means we've got to go to VEPSC, probably spring, summer of '25. So we're 15 months.
Okay. But that goes back to like your J.J. Newberry's, that's in the TIF district, so.
Right. I will tell you that there are new, there was new legislation passed last year that prohibits tax stabilizations in TIF districts. Are few are grandfathered, but no new ones in the TIF district.
I didn't know that passed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's logic there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
So to councillor Stockwell's point, you're, the guidance you're suggesting is that maybe staff take a look at this and, and determine a criteria to win it down based on what is near-term, high-impact, lowest barrier.
Yeah. And I think I would, I would amend that. I would also suggest if there's councillors who have thoughts about where those ought to be ranked, we'll, we'll take those in, just like we took these ideas and I can, you know, we can add the staff perspective and sort of weigh it in with the feedback we got from members of the council.
One of the things I worry about is that we don't know what we can do with the river and how it really does influence where we can build and what we can build. Like if we know that we have a strong, we have a strong plan for repair, repair and buffer that's going to decrease the chance of flooding, then, then we can build in more places. But without knowing that, I, I think about something representative Anthony said was that we have to plan around the river when we're thinking about where we're going to build. And the other thing I think about is that Berry has, Berry City traditionally has had a high population of people living in poverty and still does. So we have to give people opportunities to buy into housing, not just rental housing. There has to be opportunities to buy into a condo or into a duplex so that they have an opportunity to own something that will have value. So I think that for whatever buildings that, that go up in whatever ways, there needs, there needs to be some sort of criteria so that we know that 25% of any rentals are going to, are going to be, if they're, if the rest of them are at market rate, there's 20 to 25% that are affordable so that in the same building, it isn't segregated.
Councillor Jerry?
Councillor Stockwell, are we willing to offer tax stabilization in order to make those units affordable?
I don't know. I think we don't know yet about what, what kind of money is going to come in for the developers in what way.
Councillor Shumbo?
I have, you know, in terms of the tax stabilization, I, the tax base is part of our huge issue. So I, I think it has to be a broad conversation before we throw something like that out immediately because, yes, there's the benefit of having somebody develop it, but, but we need the income. I mean, pure and simple.
Can I follow up on that?
The Michaels each raised their hand, so you call on them.
Michaels.
Michael A. Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because we, we kind of did a tax stabilization for 17 years for Downstreet. And so, so just think of that as a, you know, if we're talking about tax stabilization, five years versus 17. But with that said, we should not stabilize the education portion because you pay for that, you know? The homeowners pay for that.
Well, the same is true.
It's not limited to all the taxpayers. And more of our property is owned by commercial property owners than so.
Yes. I mean, people that are paying taxes, property taxes are paying for the education portion.
You're good.
Right. So anything that, you know, people feel strongly for or are strongly against, just that, so we can identify potential, you know, if we're looking for the low-friction political consensus pathway, what are things that are, you know, red flags for you? Councillor Bud.
I think we have to define what affordable housing is because we, we put that term out there and, you know, I, it just makes me a little concerned because it's not the same for everybody. And, you know, right now, rent for a three-bedroom apartment is 1,500 and up. And for me, that's not affordable. You know, and how do you get beyond that? And...
You mean, how do you get lower?
Yeah. I mean, how do you, how do you get lower than that? I mean, unless you're talking about government-funded housing, you're, and we've got quite a bit of government-funded housing in Berry City. We've got more than our local communities. And I just, you know, we have to have a conversation of what affordable housing is and how we get there because I don't think, I don't think coming up with big projects in general are where we're going to get affordable housing. You know, and I think of a property that, you know, a lot of people dislike and it provides, it, there's a niche for it in the market. And it just, yeah.
Could you say more? I'm not sure I understand what you're.
I shouldn't have said it to begin with, but there's, there's.
What's the definition of affordable housing?
What's affordable housing?
It's somewhere between, it's a percent of the median, it goes up to like a hun- yeah. So it's like 80% of the median income. So there is a definition and like habitat uses a range around that, around that point. So there's, there's, there's plenty of definitions, but I don't think I truly understand what your concerns are.
Maybe, maybe, let me see if I can thread it. So.
It's fine, don't worry about it.
You don't want me to try?
No, it's fine.
But perhaps councillor Stockwell's emphasis on that there needs to be multiple strategies and including ownership options and equity building options in tandem with other housing types, your concern, what I'm hearing you say is that you want there to be affordable options for people in the city. You're concerned that the thresholds for affordability may be a little too high and that you'd like to see maybe a different type of housing that better, better meets a lower rent or can, can provide lower rent?
Yeah.
Okay. Councillor Jerry?
Something to, to your effect councillor Stockwell, the thought of co-op housing had come to mind, something I was doing some digging on, was the individuals buy into this, this association of a big unit of buildings. Maybe it's 10 or 15 condos, we'll call it, in a building and each individual buys in as a condo association. It's a co-op. And then at that point, it's not a run-of-the-mill run by some management association, but actually run by people who own it and have a stake in it and take much more care of it than, than just some building that you're renting. And then that also gives them that equity stake, but in the event they don't want to be there anymore or something changes, they can sell that and then they have that equity built up as well.
Exactly. It's, I mean, there are a number of, there are a number of designs out there of ways to, to create units that people can buy into. But when I think about like what's a priority that I think I've heard agreement from all of us, it's to sell the city lots for a dollar and get people on board. That could happen quickly, like once we have the assessment, we have identified that, that's like a three-to-six-month thing that we could do, could maybe, and then, yeah, you have all these other things. You have a phase one, phase two, phase three.
So I thought I had with that was maybe we could do a pilot program of sort where it's a stepped approach to their taxes. So maybe they pay what the market rate is on taxes for that assessed property, whether it be a parking lot or maybe it's a condemned building that the city has taken ownership of. And then maybe after 10 years of a pilot, then they pay what the taxes would essentially be on that, that property, bringing the tax base back into line on the grand list.
So like a graduated subsidy where they have a fixed assessment. There's revenue in the bank, but it's helping bridge, it's local taxpayers helping bridge the cost, production cost for, through some type of private-public partnership.
Sure. Maybe it's one individual that, you know, wants to buy a house, it's run down. And then there's that gap that they're going to need that capital in order to, to gain that, that success, you know, to build that where it needs to be. So maybe that time, we give them a timeframe of five or 10 years. Maybe it's a big project, you know, a new apartment building or something. And we give them a timeframe and say, look, we're going to kind of give you this pilot, you know, your payment and leeway of taxes for five years or for 10 years, whatever we could come up with. So just a way to get more people to buy into the city and not necessarily sell the city lots for a dollar, but you kind of have a graduated income at that point, knowing that you'll get more assessed value from it in the long run.
I think that if councillor Lozon were here, I'm sure he'd be talking about the gap between the construction production cost and the appraisal value and what, what banks will finance and ways to bridge that gap both locally or with state, state funds. And, and I, I think we do, we do have that here in a little bit with private-public partnership for housing under the equity stakes, tax-sharing model. I think what has to happen for that, we need to start thinking, if we're going to do that, there's going to have to be some policy thinking behind what, what are the, what are those agreements look like and legal, legal preparation to how something like that might be structured? like that might be structured, either through our attorney or White and Burke Real Estate Investment Advisors. But we have a real opportunity right now because we have, particularly in the tax increment finance district where we own a lot of parking lots and we know that there's opportunities to better manage that as an enterprise through some capital investments and signage and looking at lease agreements. We also have the master planning project underway with V H C B, looking at on-street, potential expansion of on-street parking in the downtown on Elm and Summer and Keith. And I'm trying to think there might be another confluence of opportunity. But it does feel like if we're going to do that, then we need to understand which leases are most fungible and how we can best meet those lease agreements in the most convenient way for the leaseholders on municipal lands to see where we might be able to fit more homes as fast as possible in partnership with the state to help flood-impacted households.
And I also think conversion, well, we have two people, but I also think conversion of office space is a great idea, but we need to remove some of the things that are barriers now to people converting that space and maybe increase the amount of money they can get for doing so. Because those are quick rental units. They're basically functional. They're right there.
And just, we might, we wouldn't even have to, in theory, we wouldn't have to touch taxes for that. That could just be granted. We got money for that.
I see a hand raised from Joelle Mulvaney and then to circle back to Nicholas to just hear his thoughts.
Representative Anthony.
And Representative Anthony following. Joelle and Joelle.
Thank you. I'm Joelle Mulvaney and I actually live in the North End and I'm in that catchment area that the state has identified. So there's a few things. Number one, I like what Michael said about, I'm sorry, Michael Booton said about affordability. And one of the ways that the city council can address that is through a rent control program. There are plenty of communities. There's even a couple of cities in, I think Burlington has a rent control program. There's also a concern of mine that along with what you all were saying, there's a concern about replacing the value for people who have lost their homes. That's an asset for them. And to put them into a rental unit or to put them into even a condo would not necessarily replace that value for them. So I notice in the city's project and in everything we've been talking about, the emphasis is on multiple units, multiple family units. And I would encourage all of the plans to include single-family dwellings as well. So that's part of the mix and that makes it a little bit more diverse. One of the goals that you have in your housing is to increase the number of single-family dwellings. So I think that fits. But personally, my most, my biggest concern is, and it's so ironic, wetlands actually help during a flood situation. The one last existing wetland in the city, which is the Canalus Woods, is slated for development in the plan. So I'm concerned about things like that where, and also, and living in the North End, I actually have had no, I'm a pretty active volunteer in the community. I've had no connection to anyone doing any of these plans. No one's called us. No one's done a survey. So I think it's really important to understand that even though some of us in this area have not had our homes actually compromised in any way by the flood, we still live in this neighborhood and the development of the neighborhood is important to us, even though we may not have been personally affected. So there has to be a way to hear voices along with the voice of those.
Thank you, Joelle. And I think we'll hopefully be able to touch on some of those points in the next agenda items. Representative Anthony?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councillor Booton that frankly, it is very important not to include in stabilization agreements the forgiveness for the ed tax for a variety of historical reasons. I'd also say, point out that stabilization agreements can be staged. They don't have to have a cliff. That is to say, you get a freebie for five years and all of a sudden, whammo, your obligation increases substantially. You could have a stepwise, if you will, stabilization agreement. And lastly, I would say if the consensus of the council is to encourage ownership, whether it's in clustered housing or single-family, there's no reason that the stabilization agreement could be differentiated between whether or not we're talking about creating rental housing as opposed to owner-occupied. And as all of you know, I have been a persistent, if you will, spokesperson, advocate for owner-occupied just because of where the city is in terms of the balance between the two and the fact that I think the city needs to be encouraging equity building amongst its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. One more before looking back. Listen, Amy Galford?
Hi. I have a general question about the city's role in housing development. You know, we've got public dollars potentially involved, local, city, state and federal, you know, but does that mean the city is taking on the role of being kind of a real estate developer? Or is this that the city is engaging with private developers? So when you talk about selling off municipally-owned property and then presumably that's going to be to a private developer, like, does the city put restrictions on that somehow in terms of what happens with that development? Is there any way to set priorities where people who currently live in Berry, particularly those who are placed in, you know, displaced by the flood, that sort of thing? I'm just curious about the public versus private role in this. And there's part of me that's always reluctant to have public money go to private groups, whether they're nonprofit or private developers or what have you. But also, it's not the city's role to be developing housing. So I'm just curious what people's take on that is.
And I'm going to just start with that by saying that really the only places where significant housing development is happening outside of Chittenden County, where the rents can sustain the loan payments, is happening in communities with a lot of private-public partnership. And St. Albans City is really the poster child of using their TIF and layering the city public investment with state investment, with tax increment financing funds, with hospital funds for Northwest Medical Center and other partners like the Community College of Vermont. The same thing, the city of Rutland has a development authority that's really active in taking vacant properties that nobody wants to touch and bringing them back online. And so those are, those types of initiatives outside of Chittenden County are, seem to be the, some of the major things that are getting, getting housing starts going. And the city has done some private-public partnerships, mostly for commercial office development in the past. So it wouldn't be something, a totally new space for the city. But it does, you know, require a lot of public transparency and trust and good, fair, good, fair pre-development agreements so that the city taxpayers know what they're getting and they don't end up in a hole in downtown or elsewhere. So.
Yeah. And I just think, you know, there's, there's some properties in Berry that are on the, you know, they're on Realtor.com right now. But I wonder if people are going to be spooked against buying them because they worry about flood damage, even though I think some of them are, they're in the, technically in the North End, but they're not, they weren't majorly flood damaged, but people might be spooked from that. You know, does the city come in and buy those and do something to make them more saleable? Or, you know, there's vacant properties in the North End that haven't had anybody living in them for five years. And I don't know what, what's going on with the ownership and why that's not happening. But, you know, is that something where the city would play a middle role in getting housing back developed again? Thanks.
Yeah. Good questions.
Hi there. I'm Gus von Berry. I live up on Washington Street. I thankfully was not directly affected by the flood. But I do, so urban development and planning around efficiently zoning cities, that kind of thing, that's a bit of a hobby of mine. I'm just, I want to kind of challenge a little bit whether or not it was strategic, the priorities of housing development that were selected, because it seems a lot of it is about single-family homes or multi-unit homes when studies across communities, across states, across countries have all shown that mixed-use, high-density housing is the absolute best investment that cities can make. They are higher tax per acre of land than any other type of housing you can build because of the increased value that you bring in from sales of businesses and the property value itself. It's highly desirable. People want to move there. It was talked about opportunities for different modes of ownership or rental or rent-to-own options. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the idea of community land trusts, but those would be excellent if there are opportunities to set those up to build these kinds of high-density units so that people, you know, if someone wants to make a buck building these things, fine, but we should look for ways to make sure there's not a profit incentive long-term that's crushing people under high rents. And things also like trying to minimize, as we said, new infrastructure, especially in the form of roads and requiring a high parking count per unit, which can, you know, the, like, we talked about, most of the people most affected by the flood were, are low-income residents. A lot of them can't afford to maintain a car. They can't afford the maintenance on it, the gas, the registration fees. If we can look to reduce how much new roads and parking we have to build, we reduce how many cars are going through our city, reducing long-term impact on the actual maintenance of our roads because fewer cars means fewer, less wear and tear over time. We don't have to go all of our streets having potholes and like paved over asphalt that's going to have to be redone in a year, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a lot. But like, I just, I'd really like to see a higher emphasis on opportunities for mixed-use zoning that include pathways for the residents of those buildings to have ownership. And if there are also any incentives to include things like childcare in those mixed-use zones, you know, again, these are low-income families that, you know, if they have to take their kid the next town over for childcare and then get to work, that's car maintenance, travel costs, the childcare costs, when they could just bring their kid to the daycare downstairs from where they live.
Very good points, Gus. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, Gus. Are you on a committee already on the city?
I was, I was, I was looking at how to volunteer for the development board after the previous volunteer discussion.
I would, I would appreciate you applying for that.
Particularly talking, your thoughts about fiscal sustainability and assessed value per acre. It sounds like you've read some Joe Minicozian Strong Towns and, and that's exactly what we need to do to get, break our fiscal strength.
Yeah. I'm absolutely looking forward to volunteering.
Councillor Booton?
Yeah. Can we get a list of all the properties that we have? I think we did this...
It's on the website.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking at it right now, but I would like, because I think we did this exercise like five, six years ago and we determined, and we determined there were no properties that were, were developed.
There's less than you think. If you look at the number of properties that the city owns, there's, there's a bunch of them that are on small slivers of things that, that will never be, that are, you know, right away for digits and things like that. But there are some, and there are some that are, could only be developable if, if a paper street was developed to them, because we own some lots in developments that were never brought to fruition. On, you know, yeah, we have, we have been through this exercise before, but still, with, with a new set of eyes, with a new sort of goals in mind, you know, the ideas of potentially changing minimum lot size or different things like that, there, there may be some things that come to mind, that come to light that, that didn't the last time around. So.
So I've got, oh.
You pushed the button.
Well, and I think the focus, last time we had this conversation, four or five years ago, I think the conversation you're remembering, Michael, is we're specifically talking about city-owned undeveloped lots that are but property owners who may be interested in absorbing some of them.
No. No, this was, this was longer. It was before.
I was saying the last time.
That was one of the times.
That was one of the times.
That was like the last time.
Yeah. That was to increase.
To Carol's point, there's just a very different way to approach the conversation than what we're talking about here.
Yeah. And we've gone through it recently. I mean, I'm happy to share with the council. Janet can run this list in her sleep. But we went through this this summer with the flood. Like, we were, we were looking for any place where we could drop a trailer, where we could do anything, you know, that was connected to sewer. So we're happy to share that list. I think that it's certainly something we can provide, but we have been...
That'd be great.
Yeah, we've been very recently looking through what our inventory is. And as the clerk mentioned, there's just not, you know, and I think we would know, right? Like, if there were obvious candidates for development, they would be developed. So you'll, I think you'll find that what Carol said is right on, which is that the ones that you'll see are in, on a paper street with no roads to it, on ledge, those types of things. And so, but we are more than happy to do that. We've been, we've been very active with this during the summer because of the flood housing crunch.
We could certainly just put them on the, list them and see who buys it. Because, but I think you'll find that there will be a lot of kickback on some of those properties. You know, same.
All right. So in terms of like, next steps, what I'm hearing is that there's, a lot of funders are interested in seeing a consensus strategy from this council and it's, has maybe a little bit more prioritization. What, what do you think is...
Yeah. I think, Mayor, what I would suggest is, you know, taking, starting probably with our strategic plan, which was a document that was done as a, the council did as a body and approved as a body, looking at the strategies that were listed there and then perhaps building out those strategies with some of the details that came in through the feedback process. And I think there was the one that I, Councillor Stockwell mentioned, which I did think I heard consensus on as well, was looking at a very near-term listing of a city property. Councillor Lowzon is not here, but at a council meeting in October, he suggested a specific parking lot, which, you know, I think probably fairly quickly we could create an RFP, you know, for that property and see what proposals we get back, like similar to what we did recently with the Wheelock Council. It's like, what, what is the proposal for this building? What is the, but now what is the proposal for this lot? And then the council can have a choice to make about what, you know, what the best potential use is from a, from a developer.
So you don't think we need to look at all the parking lots and which ones have the most, lowest friction opportunity, just?
We could. I think that, you know, we'd have, you know, I'm just suggesting that Councillor Lowzon mentioned one that I think was eligible, available right away. I don't think that it limits the opportunity for others. I think that that one he suggested may be a low-hanging fruit possibility. And again, the beauty about a request for proposals, we don't have to accept any of them.
Well, one thing that concerned me is you were talking about new ideas that we haven't seen yet. And what we're trying to do is move ideas that have been on the table for a long time and process and distill those ideas. So we haven't seen any of the feedback from the VCRD visit, but we have been working on this for a long time. And a lot of these have been city plans for more than 10 years or more. So, so to me, it's like, I hear like new ideas and we're trying, and if new ideas mean more... like new ideas and we're trying, and if new ideas mean more consensus building, at what point can we have a consensus plan based on what we have already done? Or should, are you saying that we have, we should wait?
I, I don't, I don't, I think the VCRD report, based on my experience at the, the sessions I attended, is probably going to be very similar to the themes that we've, that we've had before. So I, I don't think, unless, unless there's something I missed there, I'm not sure that there's going to be any surprises. I think we've seen the white, the white paper from the Housing Task Force has themes that are consistent with, with our strategic plan, which I think will be consistent with likely much of the feedback that was shared at the VCRD. So I, we can wait. I'm not sure that we'll hear anything earth, you know, shattering, earth-shattering differently.
It would be my preference that this parking lot is a place to start. We can still continue to do, to assess the other parking lots and say, well, what are the other places? But here's a place we could possibly start. That seems worth doing. And I didn't hear any, there wasn't any dispute about it, shockingly enough. So, so for that reason alone, it seems like a good place to start. And we could try that process of having an RFP, who comes up, what's their plan? And then we still can have, let's look at the other parking lots that are basically sitting there, doing very little.
So, so do we, can we get to the point, I think what people are looking for from this body is that we're adopting something and saying, we're seven people on board with this playbook. So can we put, can we get, distill this down to the, for the next council?
Yeah, I think we can. What I'll do is I'll, I'll send out a way to get council feed, you know, we can certainly do with Tess and with Janet, and with likely other people on the team, we'll sort of go through what we think priorities could be. I'll, I'll reach out for ways to get counselor, council feedback on that as well. And I think we can, we can have something ready for, for the next meeting that's more condensed, which I think would be great to get to a smaller, more narrow-focused list.
Counselor Bruton? And this is not going to affect the, the state plan that they're working on. I mean, this is correct, because I mean, if we're, if we're talking about not focusing on what the state is like, interested in, okay. Because I, I mean, I think we need to be very supportive of what the state wants to do down in our North End.
Mr. Wazak?
Yeah, and I'll get, because it's so non-controversial, I'll get started on drafting the rent control charter change.
That one might be a, a firecracker.
Just go with the law.
You want to see rent?
Okay.
Until units go down, that'll be one way to do it.
So, um, so I think we can wrap that up, and we're, the consensus by unanimous consent of this council, let the record show that we're going to come back and we're going to aim to adopt a consensus strategy in our next meeting. So that takes us to a review of the draft engagement plan for the gateway.
Thank you, Counselor Wazak.
Yep, give me one sec.
This is a joint, you know, Pat and I worked very closely on this. I'll, I'll lead us through.
Once Counselor Wazak gets it on screen.
So slide two, just some high-level goals for the engagement process. And, you know, just right off the bat, the, the goal here is just to reach residents and businesses, particularly in the North End, but other parts of the city as well, to provide input and feedback for the vision that we started to, to talk about in the North End. This will help hopefully inform information about the planning, the funding, implementation of this broader vision that's been talked about, help inform all of you, and give us an avenue to, you know, share the plans that have been drafted, and get opportunities for some, some really specific, concrete feedback, not just initially stage, but sort of on an ongoing basis. The communication tool, so, you know, there's, there's really not too many different ways to do engagement. I mean, the best way to do it is to have in-person public meetings. And so that's, that's really the, you know, it's a, no need to really reinvent the wheel in that regard. We'll talk a little bit later about how we get people to those meetings and make them more accessible, but that's really the, the way to do it, especially in a community like ours, where you can just show up to the meeting and, and speak your mind. We're looking at citywide locations, so likely something at the Opera House just because of its capacity, but also a neighborhood-based meeting closer to location on the, the North End. We talked about, you know, meeting with the, the city, members of city boards, commissions, and other affiliated volunteer organizations. So these are the most, you know, by many metrics, right, the people who step up to volunteer on DRB, Planning Commission, all our other committees, they're, you know, not necessarily the most engaged people, but they are a segment of the most engaged people in the community. So I think getting to them will be important, doing a unique meeting with them will be important as part of this process. We've created an email address for feedback and questions. So Amy Galford, if you're still on, you can send me that email now, right there. It's northendfloodrecovery@berrycity.org. That's something that both Pat and I received, so we will be able to triage that together. As people send feedback and send specific questions, we'll be able to, to, to work on that as a team. We're going to create a dedicated page on the city's website. So we don't, I, I don't want to create a, a new website for this. I think there's just too many places for people to go. So we're going to build it right off the city's webpage. I think we had a, some success with the flood-specific part of our website. So we'll, we'll work something similar to that out, so people have a concrete place easy to find on the website to go and get information about, about this project. And we're, we're going to find ways to, to conduct surveys as well and figure out how to reach people through the, through the data that we have and, and get them to respond to that. Next slide. So just to quickly on the timeline, like I said, the, the email is complete and active, so that can be, that can be used by residents. We're going to also work with Berry Up to get the VCRD notes to help inform what we hear. Like, like I said, I, I think the themes will probably be very consistent to what we saw in the, the white paper and in the strategic plan. So I'm not expecting anything totally different, but it'll be good to get a, a sense of, you know, a temperature check on where people were right after the, the flood. And we will, we're going to do at least two public meetings. We're going to target the Opera House for one of them. Again, that's for capacity. That's the, really the biggest venue in the city. So in order to make sure, assuming we're successful and have a huge turnout, we'll have a place for everyone to sit. And then we're going to target a second meeting more locally, looking at the Mutuak Club as, as a location to, to host that as well. And, and again, do similar to the VCRD meetings, which is an evening event, six, 7:30, or, or thereabouts, so people can attend after work, but, but not too late. Next slide, we'll look to meet again with the public bodies. Here at City Hall, we'll do a, a separate meeting with them, as I mentioned. I think besides having some really great expertise on some of the bodies that will have a, a more direct role in this, like the Planning Commission or the DRB, there's just some really talented people who serve on committees. And so, and they're engaged. And so we hope we can entice them to come to meet with us and, and give us their, their feedback. And we will, you know, we will, after holding the community meetings, we'll look to absorb that feedback. I think one of the things, as Pat and I talked, we want to make sure that, you know, we not just receive feedback, but incorporate it. So we, we're looking, we'd be looking at a follow-up process in January, after we've actually gotten feedback as well. And, and again, be open to and flexible to additional neighborhood meetings. I think, you know, this is, we're going to, I think I can speak for Pat here. We're going to do our part to reach people, to make it easy for people to attend, to make it easy for people to give us feedback. But we need people to be responsive to that. And so if there is a demand and a bandwidth and an interest in more public meetings, we've talked about being open and flexible to, to doing that as well. Next slide, just some other meeting considerations and logistics. I was, you know, thoroughly impressed with the VCRD process. And, you know, they offer transportation to and from meetings. We would, you know, Pat and I talked about doing that as well. I know Berry Up has many volunteers who could help. I know that VCRD used rideshare services as well. So we would look to replicate some of that. We even talked about, if the timing is right, talking to the school district about using school buses to run people, certainly when the meeting is, is at the Opera House. Childcare on site again, which I believe Adam, our volunteer, our ex-volunteer coordinator, had a hand in helping arrange for the VCRD meeting. So we would follow that model, which, which worked well. I think we're, you know, leaning towards the in-person option. I think it's a, it's a, you know, sort of an easier way to get feedback from people and, and get cues from people and follow up with people. But we will look at virtual options for people for whom an in-person option is not available. I think it's really challenging. And, you know, we didn't have a full Zoom option at the VCRD forum, because it's just really hard to do that in a space that large. So it may end up being a separate event, but we'll certainly work to make sure that that's an option.
Counselor Bruton?
Yeah, I think Counselor Deering did too.
Sure, sorry.
So I thought it would be really helpful to do just an online session only. I, I know a lot of people don't want to come out of their house, especially at night, cold. So I think to get as many people involved, I would really encourage you to have a standalone Zoom meeting, not necessarily one that's part of the other two forums.
Yep.
The one that's just online.
I happen to agree with that.
And.
Bruton and Counselor Stockwell?
The one thing regarding the meetings, which would be extremely nice to have, is a recording of them.
Recording?
Yep. And, you know, a $300, $360 camera.
Yeah, I mean, and we can.
Donate mine.
Yeah, and I, I think we can record via Zoom. I think that the owls will help us do that. The participation via Zoom is challenging, but I, we, we can certainly work on the logistics of that.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting the participation part of Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I'm just suggesting recording it.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I think, I, I agree with that as well.
Counselor Stockwell?
I think this is a bigger ask, but I wonder if we could have a virtual sandbox of a kind. I was looking at city building, well, games, but, but somehow you have a map of the city with the, with the areas where you could put housing. And the minimum size of a single-family house is 286 square feet. So if you had like, here's single-family homes, little rectangles, here's bigger apartment buildings, so that you could move around the possible configurations in an area. I think that's probably a big ask, but the software's out there.
Yeah, I, it's certainly above my skill, and probably our city's skill, but Pat and I can connect on that. We'll have to tap into the state's resources for that, I think. But thank you. I, I, I just don't know if we have that up on the city, but we'll, we'll connect on that.
Thank you.
And then I think that really the, the crux of this is, as I mentioned, there's, there's no real grand develop, you know, grand discovery we've made about public engagement. Here, I think we're, it's about a public meeting, and how do we get people to attend that public meeting? So we're going to do flyers. I think Adam did a terrific job on canvassing ahead of the second VCRD forum. So I think we're going to probably ask some of assistance with that as well. And, you know, get it out to all the social media pages, get it on the dedicated web. Those are the basics, right? That's what you do anyway. We're going to try to, you know, reach the people reading still the, the paper, right? So do letters to the editor, to the, the local papers in the area, to, to invite residents who might catch it that way. Again, Pat and I have talked about advertisements, funding dependent. I was, did a radio show this morning, and, you know, we're happy to do more of those to plug it as well. You know, that's, it's a standing audience that we can reach that way. And then to the extent we do, you know, really any city mailings, right, to, to get the word out that way, that's a, that's a captive audience that we have there. And then continuing on the next slide, just some other thoughts, you know, trying to maybe think of some, some gaps that we didn't hit with the VCRD forums, which is to, you know, directly use Berry Up with the, the people they've been able to reach, because I think by definition, they're reaching the folks who, who have the most at stake in this process. Working with Capstone, who again, has a captive audience, and the service clubs who, who are very active as well. Working with the labor unions. I know, we have unionized staff here. We, I know USW represents many of the granite sheds in the area. So to the extent we can, that they would help us get the word out. You know, also thinking about other organizations with captive audiences. I'm a parent of Berry U Sports kids, and I get a lot of emails from them. I read every one of them. So I don't know if Berry U Sports is going to want to do this, but I certainly will reach out to them, because they have an email list of people who, who check them out. And again, this is a, this is a, my, my pet peeve from the VCRD forums, I'd love to get flyers home with students in their backpacks. That's, you know, I've, 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 this is the way, I just gonna, you know, revert to New York City, 1.1 million kids, the way New York City communicates with families is putting stuff in backpacks. It works.
It's great.
So, I'll work with Adam on that as well. Because we, we didn't.
We're hearing a different.
We weren't successful. We weren't successful last time with that, but I, I will get that done.
If you hit roadblocks, we can talk about it too.
Okay, good.
In Hunger Free Vermont does a lot of work with the Agency of Education.
Perfect.
In distributing information, nutrition programs.
You received roadblocks?
Yes.
All right.
There's a board member there. Take advantage.
Yes. So that's really the plan. I think, like, as I mentioned, as I opened with, like, the, it's not reinventing the wheel. It's public meetings. We're going to try to do one. I think one of the differences for VCRD is to try to do one in the neighborhood, see if that changes the participation. We're going to try to reach, you know, fill in some of those gaps for how we get the word out, and hopefully we're successful. And I would just say, look, it's, we're going to do our part. I think Pat and I are fully committed to doing everything we can. But we, you know, we'll, we'll need residents to, to do their part as well, right? It's two, it's, it takes two to tango. So we will certainly do as much as we can, but we, we hope people will take, take us up on it and, and come and give us their feedback. So. And then just at the last slide, just some, again, some questions. Are we missing anything? Do we need more, more or less of something? As I mentioned, we will, we will do what we can and, and to reach as many people as possible.
Pat, did you want to add anything?
Well, sure. Just for the record, I'm Pat Moulton. I'm the Central Vermont Recovery Officer, working for the state and the Agency of Administration. And yeah, I mean, I think Nicholas said it well, this is not rocket science on how you get public input. But the important thing now is to get that public input. And the real goal, I mean, as we said, is to hear from the city residents, hear from folks on the North End. I mean, I've, I've had some conversations the last few weeks, saying, well, great that the governor came, but we kind of got the horse, the cart before the horse. How do we get the horse in front of the cart again, and get that community input? And this is about getting that community input. What are the desires and hopes and expectations as we go about a North End and general resiliency planning in the, in the state, in the city? And, and the governor laid out concepts, and they were exactly that, concepts. And I heard him say multiple times, this is not cast in concrete, it's not cast in stone, this is an idea. And I, and I think it's gotten some good thinking stimulated. Now we've got to go back and say, okay, what do you all want? I mean, this is the city's project, because it's what's got to happen for the benefit of the city. This council has to be engaged, the people, the city have to be engaged. The state is here to facilitate and help. But with respect to your comment, Counselor Deering, it's, it's not a state project. It's, it's the city's project that we're here to support in whatever way we can. And that's really my role, is to try to be that facilitator and assist, troubleshoot, make stuff happen, write grants, whatever it takes. And it's going to take a lot, because it's not going to be easy. But we have to start with where people are and what they want, want to see happen. And unfortunately, we've got to do it quickly. Time is not really on our side, especially if we're going after some federal funds. Time is not on our side to try to help folks who are homeless get back into housing, hope, for hopes, folks whose houses have been destroyed, to get them back into housing. But we've got to, we got to start. And I think the sooner we can have a vision, we can then start putting projects and develop some great projects. I was having a chat with Rebecca Ellis, who works for Senator Welch, but she was the Recovery Officer in Waterbury post-Irene. And she's, they ended up with 21 projects that people said, yeah, I'll do that one, I'll do that one. And then where was their private interest? Where did public have to come in? Where was their government funding that was going to cover it? And they included resiliency projects, as well as housing development and other commercial projects. And, and that's the goal I see for, for Berry. Multi-phased, for sure. This is not all happening overnight. We're probably not going to have enough money to do it all. So that's where the prioritization comes in. But once those plans are in place and the vision is set, it sets you up for future funding. I mean, the rounds of Community Development Block Grant, whatever's going to be coming our way. I mean, the rounds of Community Development Block Grant, whatever's going to be coming our way. There's federal infrastructure money coming. There's housing money that's out there. And yet, we've got to position the city to be ready to take advantage of all that.
Thanks, Pat.
That's really about all I wanted to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
You will write grants also?
I've been known to do that. It's not my favorite thing in the world to do, but if that's going to happen, that's going to happen.
Yeah, Pat will write.
And have her sign it.
Well, Pat, just as a former Secretary of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, I know there's the EDA money, depends on having the Economic Development Corporation and Regional Planning Commission include major regional economic development projects in those plans. And I'm wondering, we're under a deadline to get, and I don't expect you'll stay at the end of this meeting, to get projects on that list, unlock EDA money. Are there, how, what should we be doing at this meeting to position the regional plan and the priorities list for the Economic Development Administration money?
Well, I think you've started it. And with the housing strategies and with the discussion about what you want to do here, I think the next question is, what, where do you need infrastructure support? Where do you need other assistance that EDA can provide, or that any federal government? I mean, the Conference of Economic Development Strategies that the state has, that the regions develop, are designed to be sort of the roadmap for any federal agency to look and say, okay, there's their first priority project, there's second, there's third, there's fourth. Let's start picking them off and seeing who can come in and provide what support. So I think you need to keep going with what you're doing, and defining what your housing priorities are, what your other economic development priorities are, what, if any, infrastructure you need. So I think you're on the right track. Yeah.
In terms of the outreach, is there going to be, like, obviously, we talked about all the, we probably have a pretty good sense of who the flood-impacted households are at this point. Will there be any direct survey questionnaire to them, without them having to come to a meeting, where they can just say, this is where I am, this is where I want to be, this is what I know my financial circumstances are? I don't want to stand up in a meeting and say how much I own my mortgage, or what my buyout price is, but information like that from flood-impacted households, will that be collected?
That's definitely a possibility. And I just, I mean, and talking, kind of whispering with Tess, I know she's talking about a survey, so where can we collaborate? Because we don't want death by survey happening here, and particularly for those folks that aren't necessarily going to come out to a meeting, to exactly your point. And then what of that information do we need to keep private? Back to Shawna's point, we've got to have some policies, you know, what's confidential, what's protected? What do we need to know? And so that we're not putting anybody's private information at risk. And so I see surveys tool, and Nick and I have talked about doing that perhaps through the website, but then making that push out. I think the virtual meeting option is a great idea, and doing that as an option, not trying to blend it with another one for those who either don't want to go out or can't leave their house easily. So hopefully they all have internet and some sort of computer access. And that's another challenge that we may run across. But, you know, maybe there's a way to get surveys into people's mailboxes. I don't know. But we've, ideally, online is just easier.
And how's the gateway defined? Is that just the area that the governor pitched in his concept, or?
I would say no, at the risk of the governor telling me I'm wrong. But I think, no, he's very open. As he said, it's concepts. And, you know, I've already talked about Scampini and Vine, and, you know, there's other areas of Berry. The key to him really is maintaining that emphasis on flood resiliency, engaging the city of Berry, assuring that we have multiple mixed income opportunities, and that we are going to at least double the amount of housing impacted in whatever we rebuild, so that there's tax-based enhancement, and most important, housing inventory enhancement. I mean, I've done economic development and workforce development all my life, and I've never seen Vermont in such a sort of quadfecta of bad news, you know? A lack of housing inventory, lack of workforce bodies, people, lack of daycare, and arguably, lack of transportation. So, I mean, these are not easy things to overcome overnight, but we are whittling away at it as a state. We're whittling away at it as communities. We've got Boku, FEMA, and other dollars coming that we need to take advantage of. I mean, it's out there. I was just at a meeting today at FEMA, getting briefed on a number of programs, and my brain is swimming. But one of the things I learned, for example, is wait now if there are federally financed housing projects, and I'm going to get it wrong, that if we've got homeless people who are willing to relocate out of state, they could literally choose an empty apartment in, like, anywhere. Somebody said Tennessee earlier. They've literally relocated people to Tennessee. Not our first choice, but there might be people who say, I'm so out of here. You know, I'm not going to get flooded again, I'm tired of winter. And that may be an option for them. And Alex Farrell at the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, he gets those lists of where these vacant apartments are elsewhere in the country that are set up like tomorrow. You could move there. I mean, so there are, again, not the first option, but, and I don't know how many of you are aware, the governor issued an executive order today suspending regulatory oversight, state and local, for the next 60 days, to really get that emergency housing kicked off. I mean, I heard Shawna talk about permits, and, I mean, that process should be, that roadblock should be off the table at this point. 60 days, but it's designed to really get these emergency solutions done quickly, and get people out of the cold. And I think that's the critical thing right now.
Great overview. I see Representative Anthony, you have your hand up.
Thank you very much. I really, I'm a booster of Patricia's participation. I just have to say, most of the progress is not going to be had by holding bake sales, Patricia. There really is some serious fundraising that has to happen, and it probably has to happen at the expense of a few promises by your ultimate boss, which is to say, there's no way we're going to do this without additional revenues that are going to be raised through the public fisc. And I also have to point out that we tried very mightily, we being the legislature, to try to figure out where housing units are that could be brought online, that aren't online now, because of either landlord recalcitrance or code violations, but we need an inventory. We couldn't get it through the legislature. We have it in Berry, we have it in Burlington, we have it in several communities, but we don't have it. Maybe Florida has it, maybe the Carolinas have it, but we don't have it in Vermont. And the reason is we couldn't get it through the legislature. So, I mean, there's a little bit of reality sobering that has to occur here, to realize what it means to have all hands on deck. And it really means facing the revenue challenge, and it really means facing the data challenge. Where are the units? And what are they being used for? And can we use them for this particular need? So, thank you, Pat, for signing on. Welcome to the break.
Sounds like some good ways and means conversations there. So from people who really show up at the outreach, what can they, what type of input can they expect? Or questions can they expect to be asked? Is it going to be a collaborative design project? Are they going to be asked about what their personal aspirations are, or, yeah?
Well, you know, we're really trying to get at, what are those elements they feel are important for their neighborhoods? What are there, feel that's important for them as we rebuild? I think we're going to hear a lot of that from the VCRD forums, and so it's kind of elaborating on that. If people have a reaction to the governor's concepts, what did they like, what didn't they like about the concepts? What's important? How important is green space? What about river access? What about the mixed housing that has a potential of combination of commercial and residential? I mean, there's not much that people are going to say, I don't know, I don't like that. But there are going to be things people don't want to see happen. The expectation is that new housing will be energy efficient, and so we can reduce costs. But how, I mean, should we be looking at some renewable energy generation potential here? You know, I mean, what are the kinds of things that folks want to see? And I've heard tonight already, you know, and absolutely, there needs to be a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, multiplex, multifamily housing. One of the proposals for high-rise building, that's potentially, that's definitely potentially on the radar. And, you know, what might we do around modular? I mean, if we could do something a little quicker with modular. Even multi-story buildings can be built modulally these days. What are those things we could potentially do relatively quickly? I mean, the parking lot discussion, I think, is fantastic, but are there, is, I mean, what's a good phase one, two, three? Four, five, six, seven, 10, you know, that type of thing. So, and then, yes, as you look at your personal plans, do you see yourself here in five years? What's going, what would change if your answer is no? What would change that? What would make you want to stay here? What would make you want to encourage your friends to come here? You know, whatever the case might be in that regard. And, you know, and for me, it's also important, well, not just me, but that we start with some river science education, that we help people understand why dredging in Birmingham is not the answer, because you're just making it worse for the people down the street, and why it's so important to maintain that, or restore that flood plain and floodwater holding capacity. Because I'm sure it's hard, if you're sitting there thinking, well, you know, I've gotten, Representative Anthony, I've gotten flooded out X times, you know, I can't keep doing this. Why is this happening? And where can I build this? It's not going to be a problem for me, or where can I go? And understanding why rivers do what they do, and that it's only going to get worse with climate change. And it, in my personal opinion, it isn't going to be 12 years before the next one happens. So the more we can get moving on things now, the better off we're going to be positioned. We saw that in communities that took on resiliency planning post Irene, and we need to be doing more of that, especially cities like this built right on the river, and that's the New England settlement pattern. It's not an easy thing to correct at this point, but it has to be.
Just to nail down on, I've just decided this is going to be the drum I beat from now until the end of the legislative session, is the city of Berry, when the governor inevitably asks you how it went at the city council meeting, we need direct state aid. We need as much federal funding as we can get, absolutely, but we need direct state aid.
And I think you've got people ready to go to bat for that, and Representative Anthony and your state delegation. Yep. And your congressional delegation is ready to go after that, too.
Long as we got 103 votes.
Exactly.
Just 103. And we appreciate you being here so much.
Well, it is my absolute pleasure to be coming in and working with the city of Berry. And a little bit about me, I grew up, I was born in Rutland, grew up in Montpelier till seventh grade, and then high school in White River, college in UVM, and I've been in Vermont all my life so far, as they say. My partner's a good Berry man, so he's already lecturing me about the things I have to make sure that I do well. And he's also helping me find where properties are here in Berry, because I'm still learning. So, and I've been doing economic development for 35 years, and that's kind of my gig, my heart, my family history. My higher ed experience was great, but it's nice to be back. So happy to be working with you all, too.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Oh, you do need us to identify a point of contact for the state. That's the third point here. And that was a request of Secretary Moore. I think you were just looking for two or three people?
Well, she is specifically looking for someone, as she discussed before, who could be a liaison with this council that isn't always Nicholas, because he's got a full-time job. And I'm not really sure who that best person is. I mean, clearly, I am part of that. But someone that the council feels, hey, that would be a good representative, somebody that we want to be coming and talking to us more regularly, if you-
Yeah, I would absolutely point to Counselor Stockwell, given that she's been active on the Housing Task Force as a member of Green Mountain Board.
At least four years.
She represents Ward Three, which is the most flood-impacted ward in the city. And, yeah, I think she'd be a great liaison.
And I would say probably Tom would be another one, considering.
Tom can already text the governor.
Very true.
So.
Well, that would be great. Something else to do.
Semester's almost over, isn't it?
Almost.
All right.
Super.
So with that-
Do you want to codify that, or are you-
Yeah, sure.
Do it by acclamation.
Is there, yeah, is there any objection to our Counselor Stockwell being the liaison for the council and to communicate back with us about the North End Recovery Project?
Sounds great.
You're in the objection. We're going to finally get this field turf off this agenda, which I meant to move to the consent agenda, and I forgot, so apologize for that. Well, thanks so much, Pat.
Thank you. And with your permission, I might, I got an hour-long drive home, so I'm going to not stick around much longer. But that's going to change in the future when I start staying over, so. Thank you.
So we have the authorization of field turf for the BOR and approval of usage fees for FY '24. There was a great memo in the packet. Sounds like a really exciting project. And so we have a couple people here. Charlie, are you taking the lead? All right, welcome. You got more than you planned for tonight?
Yeah, you guys have some serious discussions here, so I'm hoping this one's a little quicker and easier. Okay, so as you've all seen, Nicholas put together a good memo on what's happening, pretty factual. We're happy to answer any questions on that that you might have. I would like to do a little background on this to start with. Actually, first of all, I should introduce myself, Charlie Atwood. I'm Chair of the Buildings Facilities Committee, and Sue Higbee is the Vice Sheriff. Anyway, I'd like to give a little background. BYSA came to the city and our committee and presented an opportunity to put turf into the BOR. We have three members here, Mike Holbert, Andy Ball, and Ben Moulton. They're happy to answer any questions that you might have as well. But they came together, came to us with a proposal, and one of the best parts of it is they're offering to cover most of the expense of the turf. They've done a lot of homework on this. They found a great product. They have a sample that they did not bring today. It was a little bulky, but-
It's outside.
Okay, it is out here, and you're welcome to see it if you want. It's a great product, very highly recommended. They've also came up with a way to get $20,000 off the price. This is being put up in the Ball Center for, I think, a one-night activity. And then it would be taken out, if we can get the approval and the funds moving, it'd be taken out and put into the BOR at about $20,000 discount. So for the Buildings and Facility Committees, we're focused, you know, we have a great facility up on the hill. We're very proud of it. We're always looking to ways to increase the usage of it and the exposure of it to the general public. We're also lucky to have a fantastic marketing director up there. He's done a wonderful job. He's filled all the banners and the dashers on it.
This is Jim.
Yep, Janet Williams. He's done a fantastic job. The money for that has gone into the Civic Center Fund, and that's what we're asking you folks to use for this turf. So there's a couple problems that we'd like to address with the BOR. Obviously, and it's in the memo, it's primarily a winter-use facility. You know, it's a great building, winter use. We've tried to use it for other sports. I've brought several of the teams that I've coached over the years up there. Right now, we got a concrete floor. It's a bad surface to be on. It's slippery. We've had kids fall, get hurt. It's not really usable. The batting cages are up there now. They're not bad. You stay in one spot and hit the ball. We've tried to bring lacrosse up there, and it's not really usable in the present state. So if we want to move it into more of a facility that can get year-round use, we need to do something about that and have some turf in there. So, you know, those are a couple problems. BYSA is interested because, obviously, with all the rain we had, the fields were unusable, and if they did try to use them, they were damaged. I don't know if there's going to be more rain in the future, but it seems like Berry is awfully wet these days, so it would give an opportunity for those kids to get inside. awfully wet these days, so it would give an opportunity for those kids to get inside. I think the turf solves a lot of these issues. We get a lot of increased usage in the facility. A lot of different groups can use this. It's a safe surface to play on. It's very soft and foam. You wouldn't mind falling on it. It's, it's really a fantastic surface. And, you know, it's, it's less concussions, just soft, good, good facility, good turf. This would also generate a lot of revenue, which I think is one of the big selling points. The BOR does sit for a long time in the, in the spring, summer and fall months. This would be a good opportunity to generate some revenue for it. I think the return on investment would be, you know, two to three years, depending on the usage. There's a, you know, it's a little bit difficult for us to project because we haven't had this here before. So, you know, there's not really a baseline. The only baseline we've gone is we've gone to some of the other facilities, and all of the facilities with turf in it are busy. You know, they, they rent a lot of time on their turfs. So, you know, Berry doesn't have it. We've never had that, so it's hard to say what Berry would use it for, but I feel pretty confident that it would get a lot of use. So, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for, for the city. I think it's a great opportunity for the BOR. I think it would benefit a lot of different groups, and I think we'd see a lot of usage. So that's kind of a little bit of the background. You know, we're happy to answer any questions you might have and move forward.
Looks like a great overview, Sue.
I just want to say a couple of things. I think that as we read the headlines of the papers regularly, we see how many people are feeling isolated, not maybe a part of the community that they want to be a part of. We certainly have increasing amounts of, well, lack of interest in being at school. Absenteeism is at an all time high. And, and when you look at all of the things that, that we can do through a community center up on the hill, through having better choices for athletic and recreational activities, both for traditional athletic activities and also non traditional, all ages, this is the type of small incremental investment that the city will see a lot of returns for. Essentially, you know, when you, when you think about some of the hopelessness that exists right now in the community, but then you think also, well, there could be some concrete change that actually provides more opportunities for students, elders, all ages together, basically coming to terms with a lot of the changes that have been in place through COVID and through the flood. I really do think that our community centers up on the hill with added incremental investments are going to be a very strong asset to the city over time, and this is a very good payoff.
Thank you, Sue. Councilor Dunning.
We have to approve this, just pending an adjustment to the fee schedule with all nonprofits within the Berry area being qualified for that Tier One. So that be a school or.
So what's the revenue impact?
I don't know. It'd be hard to calculate.
How many, how many, well, yeah.
I think what I would propose is that we see what the use is in the first year and see if it, if price is a prohibitive factor for, for organizations, I think we can come back to the council with, with revised fees. I think we're in a learning mode as well.
We want to see it used.
Yeah, and I think these, and these fees were, were developed based on being extremely competitive with the other places that do have it. So we, we feel pretty confident that this is a, an affordable rate, but I think, I would propose that if, if we see barriers to use, that we, we, of course, revisit it. The goal is to have the turf used, right? We don't want it sitting vacant. So that, that's just my, my comment.
Yes. My biggest concern with having a school pay $110 an hour is that they don't have the finances for that. So we would kind of be excluding anyone who's not BYSA from using that cost prohibitively.
So, well, one of the selling points for me was that there, well, A, that I understand this has unanimous, this proposal has unanimous support from your committee, right?
Yes.
And that, that there's revenue on the other side of it. But if we start chipping away right away at the revenue and without giving our financial situation, I start to get a little nervous. So, but you made a motion, and if, if you feel strongly about that, is there a second?
I'll withdraw my motion. Make a new motion to accept the agenda item as presented.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Dunning, a second by Councilor Stockwell. Is there any further discussion or comment? Yeah, you and then you. Yeah, and if you get interested, your name for the record.
I'm Andy Ball. I represent the BYSA Board, and I just wanted to throw this out there so that it does get out there for the community to talk about is, like Nicholas had said, that this week the BOR is open for, opens gate for the kids. And the basketball court, you know, at the odd, would be open for kids at times, and it would be packed. We're hoping that the turf will do the same exact thing, that come April break, come summer break, you know, there's open field time for the kids to just go up and kick around a soccer ball and, you know, throw a lacrosse ball and just have a, a safe indoor environment for them to have an area to play. So just so that people have that idea, too, that it's not going to be just like a completely structured, like soccer program going up there. But like, we want the community to be able to go and use it at any point for even a kid's birthday party and rent out the space, because there is nothing like that around here.
You.
Hi, my name's Ben Moulton. I'm coordinator for Drills and Cross Program. I just wanted to give some historical context to this, so it's in advance. This first came about thanks to the leadership of our BYSA program, wanting to get back to our community of Berry City. We service Berry Town kids, we service Berry City kids, we provide sports, and at a time when a lot of schools aren't really doing it that much, we happily do it. We got an endowment from Ron York in the amount of, I believe, $600,000. And we, and our board chose to set aside, I believe, 55, and then each sporting program, lacrosse, soccer, football, all had put an additional $10,000 in. And then on top of that, our board members went to Berry Town, not even expecting this, just buy in to donate another $15,000, because they see their kids as part of our community. And I've only been here a limited time, but I always hear it's a Berry Town, Berry City issue, with a lot of funding and stuff. And everyone came together for our kids and our community, and we're really happy to provide this for Berry City for another reason to come to Berry City. Because I, I have kids that aren't athletic, so I have to drive to New Hampshire to go to indoor domes, and they make a lot of money. And so the bars down the street are going to make money with indoor soccer leagues. This isn't just for Berry Town. It's not just for, you know, elder care facilities. It's also for our businesses, too. It's another reason to bring it to Berry. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff?
I just want to add, I mean, Andy mentioned that it'll be available for private rentals, too. And we look at this as a, as a broad, blunt subject, bocce tournaments, badminton tournaments, you know, things that you usually do outdoors, like rainy, we could advertise these little things. I, I think there's just so many things we could do in there. The good part, too, is it won't affect the drive from both of them. You can drive a vehicle on it. They don't recommend packing heavy equipment on it, but it's just, it's just, it's a plus. And, you know, like Ben said, it involves two big communities, and it's for the kids. It's not just for the kids. Adults can do bocce tournaments, adults can play badminton, adults can have family picnics in there. It's, it's just a lingering situation.
And I would just even simply, just even simplifying it further, this is a place where, you know, older residents can go walk when it's cold and it's icy, and simply opening it up for an hour for people to just walk in loops on a surface where they're not going to get injured. Like, those are the kinds of things that, that we're talking about. So it's, it's, it's from opening it up for walking in circles to big indoor soccer tournaments or whatever, the, the possibilities are just, just really endless here. And, and we're being extremely conservative with the revenue estimate. I mean, you saw the numbers. We're beyond the $400 that BYSA has committed to its use. We're assuming a fraction of the remaining hours as rentals, and it still makes a huge difference for our revenue. It still completely pays for itself in 15 years. Frankly, if we, if we exceed those targets, we won't have to set aside as much because we will have saved the money to replace it well within the, the planned replacement period. So we're just really excited about what this does to make the BOR a year round, year round facility.
We have a, a motion and a, a second. And I'll just say this, I think I'm so excited by this, just the entrepreneurial aspect of the, of, of looking at an opportunity and put it, pulling together a lot of leveraged funding to make it happen. It's, it's a, it's a wow moment, for sure. So, any other comments from Councilor?
Just want to thank Ben Moulton for being the driving force behind this project. I know he's been working really hard at getting that done. So thanks for bringing it here and getting it past the finish line.
Awesome.
This is really great. This is a great development. It's wonderful for Berry City. Really need the lift. Yay.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
You. So shall we take a recess?
I was going to suggest, in the spirit of using people's time wisely, if we could do, we could do Leonine and then a recess and then come back. I just assume the budget and the CVPR, CVRPC are going to take a while.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm not sure.
Holiday parking.
And free holiday parking.
I've got to go. I actually have to go. So.
Do you want to do the Leonine?
I would like to do both, both that and the, the public parking, if possible.
For the budget?
Before the budget. I know that it's outside of the.
So thinking in terms of just what are, what are the top priorities and what's time sensitive? How time sensitive is the Leonine contract?
Not as time sensitive.
Okay.
We can do it, we can consider it next week, or next meeting.
Would anybody object to just tabling that to next?
I would love to do that.
So, a free holiday parking is a time sensitive thing, right? Because it always generally starts.
It starts this week.
This week, okay. And is there, and this request came in in the timeline manner?
It did.
Okay, all right. And then the CVRPC project list, that's due tomorrow. And so, and it, there's.
Tonight, I believe.
Or tonight.
So there's not much of a.
But there's over $100 million of EDA money on the line, and if we don't have projects in the queue.
Well, we don't, right, we don't have, what happened is, Barrier Development submitted the Prospect Heights project, but the, the application for those is, was tonight.
I'm perfectly fine with you guys making the decision on the other stuff, though I, I would love to have an opportunity to opine on the parking, and that's it. But I, I do have to go.
Well, let's, I, I would like just a 10 minute recess, and then maybe we can take up the parking table, or, or lay on the table, Leonine, or bring it, or whatever, the, bring it back next week. And then the budget and the CVRPC regional project list, I feel it's last minute, but it's, it just adds to me that we don't have, like, we have big projects in the works, and I, we should be putting stuff on the table, because if we don't put stuff on the table, it's not in the regional plan. It's not, it's not a CVA DC, and it's, and it doesn't get, it doesn't get money. But I realize that maybe it's just too late, but I.
I'm not suggesting that you table that. All I'm suggesting and asking is that we discuss the parking first, and then I can leave. That's all. But if that doesn't work, that's fine. I can just go.
You're, yeah, that's.
I, I have to go.
Right now.
I mean, I really do. I'm traveling down to Virginia tonight.
So now, you can't wait five minutes for recess?
I'm going to leave if we recess.
Okay, so free, free holiday parking, what's the discussion here, as I understand it, is requests came in, and to do this, we don't have a donor identified, which is part of the traditional request that's made?
Right. So, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I, the donor thing, which is the only thing that I really wanted to say, was that considering the fact that we have such, you know, the budget constraints that we have, the donor thing was started a couple of years ago, and I would just say that this year, we don't designate a, a charity, and we approve the, the free parking. And that's, that's all. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Prove the free parking, but don't identify it.
Correct. And it goes into general fund.
The city keeps.
And this way, you know, never, no, maybe there's somebody out there that wants to use Park Model to, to give us $10,000. It could happen, you never know.
Yeah, people did feed the meters during the flood.
Yep.
So I, I think that's a fair compromise.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing the same one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, and I need to break.
And I'm sorry, folks.
Nice compromise.
Five minutes.
We get you working together.
Okay.
The expenses, you know, the, the cost of the flood recovery projects will be significant. And then the, the cash flow is a major challenge as well. We have to front the costs for the, of flood expenses. And so this is, this is why we're really thankful for the AOT, or as I mentioned earlier today, giving us a break on the big dig payments because this, that, that saves us, that keeps money in the bank for us to, to make other obligations.
Excuse me one second, Teddy.
Yeah.
I just got a text that nobody could see the presentation online.
I don't know.
Okay.
I can see it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Slide six, please. So.
Yeah, sorry.
We.
Hold on one minute.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
So we, um, you know, the, the FY25 budget picture is just really, really grim. Thank you, Councilor Stockwell. Uh, and, and it's at risk of, of just getting more grim. Uh, so we got together, the, the department heads, myself, Don, Carol, and the department heads went through a, a line by line, like this is, I know a lot of people like to say line by line. We literally went line by line.
For like sixteen to eighteen hours.
Yes.
Between the two days.
Not that Carol was counting.
No.
And we went through cuts to operational budgets, so things like office supplies. Uh, we went through reductions of non-essential services, really painful, things like the bulky waste, uh, that we do. We went through reestimates. So are there, uh, you know, we look, the way we budget, which we many other places, but we look at historical data, right? So like if we have some historical data, audited data, that's different from what we had in the baseline. Why is that? Can we, can we reestimate down? We also unfortunately had to reestimate up, uh, which I'll get to in a little bit. Uh, and then we looked at opportunities to grow and expand, uh, non-tax revenues. Uh, and I think Carol had some really good ideas here for us to use some funds, uh, some of our, our non-general fund resources to support some, um, operational needs as well. That, that gives us a little bit of relief, uh, in, in the general fund area. So, uh, as I, as I alluded to, we, you know, in addition to making cuts and reductions, uh, we also, you know, we need to reflect the accurate spending in the budget. We, no one wins if we, if we make, you know, make up projections on overtime spending. We have to reflect an accurate budget because at the end of the day, if we don't, we're just gonna be, it's gonna be a much more difficult conversation later in the year when we can't pay bills, uh, or have to make even more difficult decisions. So we do account, you know, when we do the reestimates, as I mentioned, we do reestimates both up and down, right? So if we see historical spending that's offline with our baseline budget, we make an, we look at why that is and we make an adjustment one, one way or the other. Sometimes it's one-time expenses, sometimes it's just that the costs have gone up. Uh, so, uh, that, that is reflected here as well. We also reflected things that we've committed to, like the police department body worn cameras, which is a new, um, cost to our, uh, general fund budget. And we propose things that we think are necessary, like increases to the assessor's salary because it's a critical position we haven't been able to fill and we know is woefully underfunded, um, as it was. So there's adjustments both up and down, um, as we go through this. And what are those adjustments up and down? We'll, we'll see them on slide seven. So, well, not, not quite actually, a little ahead of myself. So, and then even before we get to the conversation with the department heads that, uh, Don, Carol and I, uh, lead, um, we have some things to account for ahead of time, right? So we have five percent, approximately five percent contractual wage increases for our, uh, represented staff. We had thirteen percent healthcare rate increases that impact just the first half of FY25 and unfortunately likely going to be worse for the second half of FY25. Um, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, that's where I said we estimate, we also reestimate up. So when we see expenses that are out of whack with what we had projected previously, we make those adjustments upwards. This also includes things like the body cameras that we have to account for. So that's three hundred sixty-seven thousand in the, um, in, in the, uh, growing expenses direction. And then unfortunately, we've, we've, you know, the fund balance that we've worked so hard to maintain will be depleted due to the, um, the fact that we're fronting a lot of expenses for the flood recovery. So that becomes one less tool, uh, in our tool belt to, uh, ameliorate the, uh, the impacts of the flood. So when we went through this process with the department heads, we identified four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in budget cuts. I, I think just a massive amount of reductions. Uh, really no department was left unscathed. Um, and so when we net that out with the increases that we identified, that's about a hundred thousand dollars in net savings. Uh, so, um, really, you know, difficult conversations, everyone came understanding what the stakes were and, and people were willing to make the difficult decisions that we needed to because of the situation that we're in. Uh, we identified ninety-three thousand dollars in a positive direction of, uh, non-tax revenue. So this helps us become ninety-three thousand dollars less dependent on property taxes, which every, every bit helps. And then, uh, we didn't do this last year, and, and I don't think there was really a need to, but this year because of the impact on the grand list, we estimated, we projected, uh, an impact in the reduction of the grand list because it's, it's just impossible to ignore this year. Um, so we project, and I'll, I'll get to how we projected that here in a bit, but we projected three point six eight, uh, percent reduction in the grand list as well. So altogether, when we, you know, um, put this all in one package, we see a four point zero three increase, percent increase in expenses from twenty-four to twenty-five. So this is lower, a lower percent increase than we had last year, uh, in what was already a really pretty, uh, responsible budget. So we are, we are trying to be as responsible as we can here with expenses and, and we came in, you know, just thinking back to, we started right off the bat with five percent increase in wages and thirteen percent increase in healthcare and we're at four point zero three percent increase overall. So you can see the amount of reduction that we took just about everywhere else, uh, in the budget.
What's driving the non-tax revenue increase?
So we'll get to that. That's, uh, two slides away. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna actually.
I, I did look at this. I just.
No, no, that's fine. So there, there's a.
Asking the leading question.
Yes. So I'm gonna go through the details of those three, uh, inputs right now. So this is just to, to show you a sampling. These are example, this, this represents two hundred eighty thousand dollars of the four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in cuts. I try to pick some of the more salient and painful ones. There's a lot of little ones that are interspersed here. Um, but ninety-one thousand dollars, uh, we are proposing temporary elimination of the planted position. Uh, it's a position we haven't filled. We believe it's less critical than the assessor at this point. Don't, this is not a walking away from it. This is a, we can't, we just shouldn't budget it next year. Um, we are proposing a, a really painful reduction in cemetery seasonal staff because again, uh, what are the things we have discretion of? How many people we hire in the cemetery is one of them. And, uh, this was a big savings and we'll have to, uh, you know, take a temporary reduction in that. Uh, this is, we're hoping none of these are permanent.
Is that not to minimize, but is that like mostly landscaping during the summer that we're talking about?
Mowing, landscaping, yes. So we're still gonna have seasonal staff. We have a, a cemetery staff person. What we've talked about is, uh, you know, if, if things, we're not gonna let the cemeteries, you know, uh, deteriorate, uh, but we have facility staff that we can redeploy from, you know, maybe they'll mow city hall park less and they'll go mow at the cemeteries more.
Is, would it be cheaper to contract out?
I'm not, I don't think, but these are pretty low wage seasonal staff. So I think it probably if we contracted out, it would be higher. Yeah.
Is there any way you could work maybe with probation and parole or the courthouse in order to, to get some, maybe work crew or individuals that need to put in some work?
I think we'd be open to it. I, I, I don't, um, Don, I'm looking at you. I don't know if there's any.
I'm just thinking off the top of my head that.
With it, but I don't know.
Pili used to do that for their cemetery.
Mr. Manager, the, the work crew, the work crew program has been suspended indefinitely by the judiciary.
So, um, we are reflecting, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars in police overtime reductions. Um, we are recognizing thirty-two thousand dollars in savings from our solar energy project. That's been highly, uh, successful. Um, we have eighteen thousand dollars in fire department equipment replacement. These are things like fire hose. We're just not gonna, I mean, this is, this is austere, right? We're not gonna replace as much fire hose as we would normally do because the fire department believes they can, um, live with it for another year. So, but these are really painful cuts.
That'd be capital?
Not at that amount.
Not at eighteen?
No, because this includes several, the, the fire hoses is one example. There's other, there's other equipment that's included in that number. We're proposing elimination of the bulky waste, yard waste and fire, entire disposal events. Again, painful, but discretionary, right? We, we're not mandated to do it, uh, and this is an area where we can, uh, cut, uh, not that we want to, but we can. Uh, we're recognizing small amount of savings, but still savings nonetheless from the sale of the Wheelock building for not having to pay utility, uh, and fuel there anymore. But this is, just to give you an idea, you, you might've noticed your copies today were black and white.
Who's going to mention that?
So we're cutting color copying and it's, it's seven cents a page and it's adds up.
Yep.
And we don't have to print in color. And so these are the kinds of things that, like, this is the level of detail that we went into, um, to try to get this budget down. Um, so.
And I tangentially related, but I, I think that this is, we should keep these things front. This is effective advocacy material too, for when we're going to the states, saying like, look like going as granular as we're not even printing in color anymore to save every dollar that we can.
Exactly. And Mayor, to your point, uh, to your question earlier, just earlier, uh, the ninety-three thousand dollars, um, in non-tax revenue. So this, the examples here represent about eighty-six thousand dollars of it. Um, and the big chunk here is for, we're reflecting, uh, higher projected pilot payments. Um, we are reflecting higher civic center rental increases. Thank you, Council for proving the turf. This was included in this number. So if that hadn't gotten approved, this would've gone down, uh, significantly. Um, but we're projecting higher revenues here, um, higher interest income, um, as well because we are, um, holding ARPA funds that are generating, uh, income. And so this is, um, this is income the, the city can keep. Um, uh, state highway projections, uh, are a little bit higher than we had been projecting earlier. We're gonna assume, uh, hopefully some higher meter revenue to five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars in recording fees. That's based on historicals. And, uh, expecting some increases in recreation and, and camp fees. So the, the rest are minor. This is, this is really the bulk of the ninety-three thousand. Um, and, and in addition to this, as I mentioned, um, we're looking to be creative with use of some of our funds. So the Semper bond, we're planning to use some of our Semper bond annuity to fund, uh, playground maintenance. So that allows us to reduce that expense in the general fund budget, uh, and it comes out of non-tax revenues.
Similar to what the council has approved in the past, we write, uh, we get the annuity every year. Five thousand of it goes into the tree maintenance fund, ten thousand of it goes into the bike path maintenance fund. Our proposal is that, um, five thousand be put, uh, into a playground maintenance fund that we create that. Um, and there is a line item in the budget for playground maintenance that would be paid out of that.
Correct. And then.
Uh, this is on these non-tax, uh, revenues, I think, and just feeding into the legislative platform development and, uh, Council Wozzak's suggestion about focusing on infrastructure. I'm wondering if Vtrans wouldn't be open to forgiving some of that big, big debt given just, I, I know it's delayed for a couple of years and very generous, but if there's an opportunity just to take that off the books.
We, we started there. We started there.
Oh, guys.
Certainly not closer than we can ask again in two years, but, but that's where we started. Yeah. And then similar, we're, you know, we've been, uh, collecting a lot of revenues in the opioid settlements. Uh, and so, uh, the use of the opioid settlement funding is pretty general, uh, and we think would, uh, cover some of the services our police and fire department use to, to service people who have opioid issues. So we are gonna assume some of that, uh, settlement funding to support, um, police and fire department operating as well. Um, so we're, we're trying to be very creative here, like as, uh, as we said, we went line by line. Um, and then some, uh, the next slide. Uh, so this is that, sort of that last part of the inputs that I mentioned. This is the three point, uh, some detail on the three point six eight percent reduction in the grand list. Uh, so we, we didn't do this exercise last year. I'm not sure. We normally would, but because of, as I mentioned, the impact this year on the grand list, we just could not ignore it.
We did, when we were, um, building the formula to project the, um, to protect the tax rates, we put in there what we think the grand list will be. And I think we actually level funded it because we didn't anticipate there being any.
A big shift.
Appreciable.
Yeah.
Um, shift. And we actually ended up coming out better than we had anticipated because, um, both Blanchard Block and City Place had, their tax stabilization agreements had ended. So they came online fully, so.
So, um, so this is our assumptions here for reduction in the grand list. Um, and some of these numbers should look very familiar. So we have forty buyout requests. We're just assuming a hundred percent less grand list value there. We don't know where all those will land. We know some of them will be buyouts, some of them will not be buyouts. We're just, um, that's just our assumption at this moment. Uh, Clerk Gauze has received, uh, uh, abatement requests, uh, forty-seven abatement requests. So we're assuming that those are probably higher level damaged buildings for people who are more active and, um, in getting their request to. So we're assuming a higher abatement, uh, a, a higher, uh, loss of grand list value there as well, fifty percent. And then the two seventy-six is the balance of the three hundred sixty-three, uh, total damaged properties. Uh, and we're just assuming a twenty-five percent. Some of these will be higher, some of them will be lower. It's really hard to pinpoint it one way or the other, but these are, these are just our base assumptions. And we, when we calculate that, it came out to a three point six eight percent reduction, uh, in the, in the grand list.
So for a buyout request, what, does it, does that freeze them paying taxes if they've put in their request for buyout or not so much?
No, once a property goes through buyout and the city owns it, it becomes tax exempt forever. So.
That's not likely to hit this fiscal year, right?
It, it could have in twenty-five because twenty-five starts in, uh, next July. So it's certainly possible that they would, that they would be on the, on the books by then.
And where it, where it gets murkier is those people that are waiting to hear about a buyout would come to us for the abatement request anyway. And so it's important that the reduction in value be reflected in the assessment rather than the abatement because the abatement is money out of our pockets, where the assessment is then.
It, right. It's money that doesn't come in. So.
Yeah. Next slide, please. So what's the result of all this? So because of the impacts of the grand list, because of that reduction in the grand list, even after factoring in the four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in cuts that we identified, even after factoring in the ninety-three thousand dollars in new non-tax revenues that we identified, even withholding the expenses only to four point zero three percent increases, with the grand list values that we are projecting, um, the, the draft FY25 budget would still result in a nineteen percent projected tax rate increase. Um, and it's, again, you can see it's, it's not driven by the spending. It's really because of the, the loss of the grand list value. Um, now, in order to not have a nineteen percent projected tax rate increase, so one metric we use, it's, it's, was what would need to happen to our budget to both, um, get to last year's, uh, tax rate increase and to be able to restore these deep cuts? Like, these are very deep cuts, right? So I think our residents deserve a bulky waste. They deserve a yard waste, right? So if we did both, if we got to our tax rate from last year and we were able to restore these deep cuts to our expense budget, we would need to have a hundred, one point four or five million dollars in direct aid to help us do that. Uh, and, and with that direct aid, one point four or five million, um, our municipal tax rate, as you can see there, would, uh, just about, um, it would be, uh, slightly lower, but, but basically mathematically the same here as, as it was last year. We, we get right to where we were last year and we're able to preserve some of these key, um, services that our residents deserve.
When you're saying the tax rate, you're talking about the municipal not.
Yes.
Yes.
Plus, uh, tax rate.
Correct.
So it'd be a two point five one, six, three, seven, four. For, with a nineteen percent increase.
Yes, very, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's dire, grim, as Councilor Stockwell said. So, um, that's, that's really the bottom line. That's the, that's the takeaway. Um, so next steps in discussion, you know, what are your priorities knowing what our baseline is, um, what funding levels can or will, the council and residents support, and what should be reprioritized to allow, uh, the city to both support paying for our mandated expenses and preserving key services? Uh, just guiding questions. I think what, what would help us to know is, you know, we've gone through this again, as I said, line by line. Um, we need to come back to you with the detailed budget here in the next, uh, at the next meeting. Um, what should that budget reflect of your priorities, uh, so that we can start getting closer and closer to a, a, a budget that can be approved for warning at the end of January?
Deering first, then Councilor Stockwell.
The first thing that comes to mind for me is what, uh, Officer Amos was saying tonight about having only two officers on with him. Um, seeing the extra cuts in the police department is something that worries me, especially living in an area where there's a lot of crime and, uh, knowing that, um, things really aren't going to get much better right now with the close of Central Mount Substance of Youth Services, uh, and the holidays and, you know, really everything else that's gonna be going on in the next year. Um, so I'd like to, if at all, uh, not touch the police services because they really are so crucial in this community. And when you call for help and there's no one there to come help you, that to me is dire straits and I'd rather not put our residents in that situation if we don't need to.
Officer Stockwell.
Well, I was looking around at the city and I was, and I noticed that DPW is working on the retaining wall on River Street, which is pretty exciting stuff and is gonna make people there happy. And I was just thinking, we can't, we can't address the backlog of DPW projects without more DPW staff. I, but I just don't see any way to add staff to DPW, not in this year. It's a cut to overtime for the police. It's not a cut.
It's a cut, yeah, it's a cut to overtime, yeah. I mean, they, they have other reductions in their budget. I mean, we, we, we made, um, and, um, we work, you know, this is, this is a collaborative budget process. So, um, Chief Vale is not gonna find any surprise budget cuts that he wasn't, he didn't believe he could not implement. Um, same thing for every department head, right? Like, we, we, we work on it as a team. And so, um, you know, these are cuts that we, because we, this is part of the direction to the staff. Don't, don't give us a cut that you can't implement because that helps nobody and actually hurts everyone down the road. So, um, you know, Chief Vale, um, is, you know, he's working, working in the room together, um, to find these reductions. So he, every reduction we're reporting, we're reflecting here, he believes he can, um, he can absorb. Doesn't want to absorb, but, but can absorb.
I have a few questions. Um, I, a few items about priorities, but my first one's about timing of all this. So, so you're suggesting that you can get with, with state aid, uh, one point four, five million in state aid, uh, we could get back to last year's tax rate.
And, and, uh, restore the cuts.
Deepest cuts.
The deepest cuts.
And restore the deepest cuts. And, uh, okay. So just in terms of the timing of that, uh, that would up the non-tax revenue for one year. Um, and the Budget Adjustment Act generally isn't signed until the end of March. Um, but by February, you kind of know where the winds are blowing and you'll know where Kitchell, Cummings, uh, Cornheiser and Lanfer are. Um, and you'll know what's in the governor's budget. Um, but we won't know the governor's budget really right until, generally right until what's just weeks before the session. We have to fix this budget on January thirtieth. Um, and so how do we budget for state aid before we have a Budget Adjustment Act?
So, so we, we wouldn't, I don't think we would budget for anything that we didn't feel extremely confident was coming because that, that, um, would only just make it much more difficult for us to find reductions in, in the mid-year. Um, and we'd be, and we'd be going to the voters with a budget that was unsustainable because what we, we wouldn't be asking for enough property taxes if I'm thinking through the math right. If we assume the one point four or five and it doesn't materialize, we'd be asking for less property taxes. That would put us in a world of hurt if nothing came through. So, um, so I, um, you know, we're gonna have to have a, as close to a hundred percent commitment as one can get from a legislature, uh, to know if this is, if we're gonna be in the ballpark.
But even so, that we're gonna have to set the tax rate, right?
You don't set the tax rate till July.
Or July, yeah.
July.
But we have to ask for the amount we want to raise from property taxes. That has to be warned. That's what we're warning in Jan, in January, right?
Yes.
And some of what I'm building up to, if we're building up to a conversation, nineteen percent projected tax rate increase, uh, even, you know, because even if this money comes through or doesn't come through, that still feels like, uh, a budget, this could be very difficult for some people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we.
Yeah, because the budget that, that the voters would approve would, based on the numbers that we put in front of them this fifth of March, lead to a projected nineteen percent increase in the tax rate.
I see representative, Anthony, yeah.
And he may know something that we don't.
Yeah.
Hopefully good.
Chat's in the mail.
Uh, thank you. Uh, it's, it's always puzzled me, uh, why the city of Barry feels that it has to vote a rate. Um, as I understand it, what you're asking voters is, uh, at a minimum, the authority to spend not to exceed. So if you do that, you're not voting a rate. You're voting an amount that you're authorized to spend not to exceed, regardless of where you raise the money. That's what you're required at a minimum to do. You can vote a rate if you want, uh, but as I suggested in email earlier today, because of the unknowns, as you folks have carefully articulated, it's not clear to me that it's productive, uh, to promise people a rate when it may be more than you need, quite frankly, uh, and you don't know that. Uh, and I cited the circumstance that the state of Vermont was in, in the spring of twenty twenty, when we didn't know what was gonna happen to revenues at the beginning of COVID. And so frankly, we did not enact a spending plan that covered the entire fiscal year because frankly, we didn't want to make a commitment that was wrong or unrealistic. So I guess where I'm going with this is saying what you need to do and what the charter requires you to do is simply say what you're gonna expend, uh, uh, spend not to exceed. The other observation I would make is being a strong believer in self-help. I don't see why you don't, uh, explore why it is that your pilot revenues are, are only going up by the amount that the state of Vermont says that they're gonna go up. Our so-called conservative neighbor, uh, called Berlin is, uh, busily, uh, crafting its own, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, expectation of many people who, uh, operate in the city of Barry and who provide very important regional services to much of Washington County and some of Orange County and don't pay any taxes to the city of Barry. I think that's, um, a gift, uh, that we can no longer afford. And I really have long thought that payment in lieu of taxes should not simply be limited to what the state decides we, uh, should receive for a courthouse and roads. Uh, so I, I guess I would encourage the council to, um, enlist the, um, expertise of the finance director and say, okay, where could we raise revenues, uh, by essentially levying activities in the city of Barry that we're now no longer at the moment touching, uh, but that nevertheless, uh, are, if you like, i- important partners and residents and operators in the city of Barry. And whether you call it payment of lieu of taxes or some other device is a detail. And clearly, that involves probably some charter work, which of course has to be submitted in about ten weeks. So I guess you, it would be good to get busy. But I think focusing only on the expenditure side is, uh, very disappointing. We, we simply have not exploited the revenue side, uh, to my mind, that we could. And I totally agree with, um, Counselor Deering. We, we just can't keep cutting what contributes to the quality of life in Barry. So, uh, if you're not gonna do that, then you gotta figure out what have you not, um, explored in the way of revenue opportunities. And that's the conversation I don't see happening. Uh, I'm happy to push any buttons I can to open the floodgates of state money, but I, again, I go back to my opening observation. I really believe in self-help first. So why don't you figure out where the beneficiaries are for, uh, who are operating in the city of Barry who are not contributing? As simple as that. As simple as that. Thanks.
So just to recap that summary, looking at pilot revenue is probably a charter issue. We have to warn the first hearing, December 19th.
Yeah, we don't have to have language then.
Yeah.
No, we just, we just warn the meetings.
But it does, I think it goes back to like the value of having a governance committee because charter work is very hard work and, and sometimes take time to get it right. You can't just reflexively do it at the last minute. But Representative Anthony, you say, you ask like, what can we no longer afford? To me, it's, you know, I'm starting to wonder about all the public safety mutual aid that we're providing outside the city borders. I understand like the socialist value behind it, but the, the reality is, is that that was, we were providing those regional services to other small law enforcement or fire departments or EMS departments when we were the rich community. And that's just really not, no longer the case. They're the rich communities and we're, and we're struggling. And I think there needs to be revenue. If we're going to start going out and doing dog calls or whatever, whatever the aid may be, there needs to be revenue from those other municipalities. Same thing for any DPW equipment. I mean, outside of the, you know, the disaster response, I think, you know, there, we got to run an enterprise and to some extent, and especially the recreation revenue, which was great to see the turf idea because I think that's like a totally a step in the right direction to build up those non-tax revenues. And then the last thing I've just, I'm wondering about is just our community, how do we stop digging this hole? We grow the grant list. And how do you grow the grant list? You have to have a really strong community and economic development program. And, and our community and economic development program has been focusing on clicks on websites and not focusing on real bricks and mortar grant list growth. And so, so I either want to see like performance agreements with those grants that we're sending outside organizations or bring it back in-house.
It's a money saver.
Counselor Deering?
Two thoughts. Could we use the ARPA funds that we do have left to leverage that 1.5 million that we're trying to get in state aid?
So.
To kind of cover, because then we have.
We have two and change. We've allocated 250,000 to Downstreet. You know, my, my, my thoughts on it are that using one-time resources for ongoing operational costs is really, really difficult. You know, it, it really, and, and just as the mayor alluded to, this would be, you know, assuming, assuming we got 1.45 or any amount of money from the state, you know, one of the things I mentioned at the last budget update was that a priority needs to be a multi-year, multi-year approach, right? We're, we're not going to get out of this hole in one year. So if we only get assistance for one year, we're only going to postpone this really difficult conversation and that's all we're going to be doing. So that's why I, I, I'm personally not a fan of using resources like ARPA because they go away and then we, we're left holding the bag. Same, same thing with the fund balance. When, when we've used fund balance, it's been for really one-time or, or very cyclical expenses. Like, the last time we used it before the flood was to buy fire gear, which happens every decade, right? So I, it's a good resource for us to have money in the bank, but I, I would, I would hope to use ARPA for things like capital expenditures, particularly the wastewater plant, which, which is under, you know, underwater, would be a better use of that.
Nice next question. Will we be able to see a, a log of what we've seen, what we've had come in for drug forfeiture money within the last, I mean, Emo said it comes in on a rolling basis, is not ever guaranteed, but we do see some revenue from that. Have we seen an increase in that by chance because of the increase in drug activity?
That's right.
We haven't, no, I think we've got a deposit of maybe 1,000.
Comes from DOJ, right?
And there's, there's.
Very, very, lot of restrictions on what you can't, you can't use it to supplant, you can't use it to, for general operations. You can't use it to buy the gun that you had budgeted to buy.
Right.
What can you use it for then? That's everything.
Yeah, it's, it, it's very strict restrictions. I don't know them as well as like Larry does and the chief and Dawn may be more aware.
Trying to blank, but it was some, like a one-time purchase, kind of like the speed cart we had bought. It wasn't that necessarily, but it was something on that nature. It was a one-time cost.
Down payment on the cameras at one point.
Talk, that was talk.
Yeah, right, right.
Thank you for helping me understand that.
Representative Anthony, or Williams?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for the discussion tonight. I don't disagree with anything that was said regarding exploring new alternative revenue generating schema locally, but just to return to the, any state appropriations that were to occur, I think it's very critical that in addition to working through the legislative process, we also approach the administration directly and they, they often have public hearings on the administration's proposed budget. And I think that will be essential, especially if we were to contract with Leinie or any other lobbying firm. I would also theorize that, and I believe Peter can also attest to this, that any sort of state appropriation would be handled through some sort of formula. That is to say that a municipality incurs X amount of economic damages and therefore gets Y. And that would simply be to avoid, or for certain legislators, namely the senators, having to be accused of any sort of favoritism for their local constituencies, especially those who work in the finance committee. So I, I think it, it wouldn't just be a single appropriation for us and us alone or us and Montpelier, but rather some sort of statewide mechanism for those flood-impacted communities. Thank you.
Thanks.
If I may, Mayor, I, I would just say, you know, we're, I think speaking for the three of us on a staff level here, we don't care where the dollar comes from. It could be a state dollar, it could be a pilot dollar, it could be a federal dollar, it could be a foundation dollar. I don't care, a dollar's a dollar. So what I would say is I would hold ourselves and our delegation to sort of the same standards that I hold our department heads, which is it has to be credible. It can't be, you know, if we can find 1.45 million of pilot payments, sign me up. I'll, whatever we need to do, I'll do it. Because that's what we think we need to keep the projected tax rate comparable to last year's levels while allowing us to restore these really austere cuts. So if there's 1.45 million of that in pilots, I will do, I think we'll jump through any hoop. We don't care where the dollar comes from. But if that's not realistic and if, and if we go down a road of a charter change and a, and a whole legislative process and it turns out to be nothing, we're in a really bad spot. So I, I would just say that, you know, we are, if you look at our list of $93,000, we are really confident about these $93,000. And we're really confident at the end of the year, we're going to be able to sit here and say, we got pretty darn close to this $93,000. If we can't get the 1.45 million in pilot payments, that doesn't help us. So I, I think we need to be, you know, whatever approach it is, and I, and I know less about the legislature than probably anyone in this room and on Zoom, but if those are not credible options, that doesn't help us.
And I just wanted to say, Representative Anthony had talked about not voting a rate and we don't vote a rate. The question that's on our ballot is, you know, shall the voters approve a budget of X of which an amount equal to Y will be raised in taxes? That's what's on the, the ballot. But everybody does the math. Everybody then takes that number, divides it by the grand list and figures what the tax rate is. If nobody else does it, David Delcor will do it. It'll be the headline in the paper, 19.01% increase. So it's, we can't ignore that as we work on this budget process.
So what's happening with the school rate at the same time? Is, are things looking favorable on their end?
They actually are because of the change in.
The waiting system.
The waiting system for, for equalized, well, it's not equalized pupils anymore, it's now weighted pupils. And so we don't, we don't have any numbers yet at this stage of the game, but the, the early projections are that the changed system will be beneficial to the City of Barry. So I don't know whether Representative Anthony's got more data on that, but he's got his hand up.
Go for it. Oh, you're muted, Peter. You're still, yeah.
I don't have specific data, I apologize. But I will tell you that because of the merger, it's not clear that we would benefit as handily as if we were not merged for the simple reason that the social demographics of the City of Barry and the Town of Barry are distinctly opposite one another. And it's not clear, not to disagree with Carol, but way back when, we would have benefited mightily under the new pupil waiting system. But the merged does not allow the Barry city demographics to somehow trump the melded or average, if you will, what's the taxing capacity of the unified district? And that number is not yet known.
Yeah, it'll, the, the merging will actually mitigate anything, you know, that, that would have been a higher benefit for the city, you know?
Another way of saying that is we were punished before under the old rates and we will be punished again under the merge.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're looking for feedback on this 4.03, 19.01. Like, if that's something the council's willing to put on the ballot, but.
There's a question.
Yeah, and Kristen Bowman.
Kristen Bowman, for the record. And I apologize for the rookie question, but the grand list is your total tax revenue? And is there historical evidence of obtaining 1.5 million from the state?
I don't know if there's precedent for it.
Is it, so are you thinking that's coming because of flood?
Yes, this is, this is strictly related to the, the flood because of the loss of property tax base that we have, yeah.
Is there ever state aid?
We get state aid, we get state highway aid, we get pilot payments, and Dawn, I'm drawing, there's, there's grant, there's, you know, odd grants, but those are tied to specific programs. I'm not, Dawn, is there any one big one I'm forgetting? I don't think there is. Mostly state highway aid and pilot payments.
And I'll ask you about another time what a pilot payment is.
It's a, I can answer, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. So the state government owns property in the, in the City of Barry, they don't pay, they don't pay taxes on it, but they make a sort of a good faith payment instead of paying taxes for, for being resident, being part of our community.
And is there then, does this, do you as counselors and as city manager and mayor go to the state and ask for that? Is that how you lobby for that money? Or do, or does the town have a lobbyist?
It was only intended to die, but we're, we punted it to next meeting. But we currently do not have a lobbyist.
In the past, it's been done in-house by staff and counselors.
Yep. And one more, is the opioid settlement, money, it's getting kind of late, is that all of it?
No, 8,000 is, is a, the amount, it's an increment that we get. So it would be, it's an increment that we're comfortable would materialize for some time based on the payments we've been receiving, right?
We're currently scheduled to get about 10,000 a year for 18 years, but there's other settlements that are coming online that'll increase that amount.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Rep. Anthony?
Just one last comment on the opportunity to increase revenues that heretofore we have not explored. And it arises from a constituent who pointed out to me that there are jurisdictions in the United States, not so much in New England, that have essentially differentiated between developed and undeveloped land. And essentially, it occurred to me because we're about to do a reappraisal, that to the extent to which the council could weigh in on differentiating in the assessment and valuation process, the difference between land which is already committed to some form of development and land that does not, we could actually set a floor rate of assessment for undeveloped land. And frankly, that means that if you want to hold undeveloped land, you've got to pay a premium to do that because what you're doing is depriving the community essentially of the revenue to offer services that you have to, you, the municipality, have to provide anyway, even if you're, you're paying on vacant land and your neighbor is paying on developed land and paying a lot more to do so. So it, it goes back to a 19th century philosophy about really, the value of all things arise from land. And so why don't you just tax the land and let development occur where it will? And taxing land alone actually encourages development. And I, I was reminded of this because a constituent said, you folks are always crying about no development. Why are you allowing so many acres essentially go undeveloped and the rest of us are paying for somebody maintaining that and getting services, but not really contributing because vacant land doesn't really pay the bills? Thanks.
We have a georgist in the house. Well, if you introduce that bill, I think that would develop parking lots faster than anything we could do. And I think we could get behind it.
Parking lots are not development, Mr. Mayor.
So, yeah, and I think there was a land value tax study last year. So, yeah, if, if you have a bill and, and your chair gets behind that, I think that could be really helpful for the City of Barry. Is there anything else budget-wise?
I'm kind of done.
I know, we're kind of fried. So 19%, poof. 4%?
Yeah.
Okay, but the 19, poof, that's hard.
Yeah, and look, and it, our assumptions may be aggressive on the grand list, we don't know. They might be conservative on the grand, it could be better than 19%. It could be much worse than 19%. That, the, this is all really riding on the grand list because as we've shown, the, the increase, the increase in expenses is lower than last year. And so it's, it's really about what's our tax base going to be. If our assumptions are right, it's going to be around 19%. And I guess the other option is to hope and pray that the grand list doesn't go down by that much. I don't think I would want to risk it on that, but that's, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to cut ourselves out of this issue. You know, like I said, we're, we're at, we're at cutting colored copies. We're not going to cut 1.45 million more to, you know, out of paper supplies. So, there we go.
Dave Delcor.
Yeah, on the, on the grand list, I'm, I'm a little confused how the, the abatement request translates into a reduction in assessment. I mean, it'll affect how much revenue you get this fiscal year, but it's going to be the value of the property on April 1st next fiscal year. You know, that's, you know, and, and you don't know what that is. And, you know, a property that, you know, Main Street flooded and you could make a good argument for a lot of businesses on Main Street that a portion of their property taxes should be abated for this fiscal year. But nobody's going to say if they walk down Main Street that their assessment that was set should be lower.
We, David, we were, we're trying to figure out what the best way to make some kind of an estimate. And the, the reference to abate, abatements or abatement properties is just trying to create some kind of codification of the different levels of damage and which ones might be coming back fully by the 1st of April. And so that's why we sort of divided them into thirds. The ones that are on the buyout list, the ones that are on the abatement list, which may or may not be more severely damaged than the ones that are on the rest of the damage list. We were trying to come up with some kind of, of a way to do some kind of an estimate.
Are the 40 folks who are on, who have requested a. Are the 40 folks who are on, who have requested abatements, or no, who have requested buyouts, are they not requesting abatements?
You'd be surprised, there's only 13 of them.
Okay, so, so are you double counting?
And that was, and that was accounted for in our calculations.
Okay, all right. That, I, you're not going to know until June what the, you know, what those property values actually are.
Exactly.
Yeah, and you could, you could wait a month before you write this article. All right, um, anything else feedback wise you need from us at this point?
So, I don't, looking at you, Dawn, I, I think we, we, we don't, I would just say, um, are there one or two things that people think should not be, and these have to be very concrete? Um, that should be off limits. Um, I, I don't know at this point if we can, honestly, I don't know if we can roll anything off. Um, I think if, if there's ideas for revenue, um, we're interested in those. Um, that's probably the, you know, if, if you have an idea for a cut, there's a really good chance we've already done it, is what I would say. So.
When do we get the detailed budget?
So that should be at our, probably at our next session at this point where.
When is the next council meeting?
Two, two meetings, the fifth. Yeah.
So we'll see like last year.
Yes.
This year, percent change by line.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll have FY '22, '23, unaudited, '24 to date, projected '24.
But I, I do think, thinking through it, that probably revenue ideas are where, you know, we, they're probably likely to be areas that we haven't considered. Um, because like I said, we, we scrubbed expenses thoroughly. So that there's a really good chance we've cut something that you're, you might be suggesting. And, you know, the, the challenge there is that, uh, they don't come in big chunks, right? So we, we were able to make 460,000 and change in cuts. Only nine, only 93,000 in revenue. I mean, that's still a big number, but it, again, dwarfs the, the cuts we were able to make.
We did make, and I, I can't remember, Peter, whether it was back when you were mayor. I think it may have been back when you were mayor, that we explored the idea of, and I think we actually voted on it, but didn't pass it, of doing like a local pilot, um, for, uh, for the, the nonprofit properties in the, in the city.
So we have language. We have language.
Uh, we, we've got something I could look back at, um, and, uh, you know, and it was, you know, not the schools, but it was looking at the churches. It was looking at all, basically everything that's on the list that isn't, um, where there is potentially an opportunity. Of course, you'd have to do it through a charter change because, you know, the, the churches are currently protected by statute and, you know, but you'd go through and identify, and we can certainly look at the list of, of all the, um, exempt properties in the city and give you an idea. One of the things that, that we had looked at was, you know, just tax them on the land. Just don't tax them on their buildings, but just tax them on their land and that would be their pilot. And so there, so there was, um, some action in this kind of direction 18 years ago, something along those lines, so.
That, that's, Carol, you're right. That's exactly what I did was tax them on the land, forget the, uh, structure, don't include churches. And to, to disagree with you slightly, the voters did actually approve that. Uh, it happened, um, that I did not survive the next election and my successor, uh, with whom you're quite familiar, um, uh, had, had the voters, uh, change that. Uh, so here we are and very old, good old conservative Berlin is, uh, uh, adopting a novelty called a pilot, which I proposed 18 years ago.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can put this in the charter mix.
So you could figure out how much, how much is at stake? Yeah, that would be worth seeing. I mean, in answer to Nicholas's.
It's not going to be 1.4 million dollars.
It's, it's quite, it was a fairness issue for me. We're all in this together, kind of fairness issue.
Yeah.
What about toll roads?
Yeah, well, I was thinking about toll roads and then if we just pair it with a couple of nice billboards right on 62.
I think you limit access to 62 and you just, you have to pay like five bucks to go to 62.
You guys are getting way too silly for me.
I think, I just want to add one thing, but it's not a surprise to anybody, but we need an assessor. Like that would help out the grand list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One way or another, it would help us out. So if you know anybody.
I thought you said you were training one.
No. My hat's full.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas.
It's going to be a, it's going to be a journey. Yeah. Okay, so, um, I will wave my right white flag on the ranking of the CDRPC for original priority project list. But I do feel like it'd be nice to have more city projects, particularly if we're talking about a downtown housing project that could access EDA money. Um, and Prospect Heights still haven't done any environmental assessments as far as I know. Uh, that's not going to get money until that happens. So we need to, we need to get real about which projects are going to move and which ones, uh, need, need more due diligence on the front end of them.
So how do we, so we're too tired.
It's, we're too late, we missed the boat on this. So I think it's an extra year thing, but, um, or we beg for a deadline extension, so. All right, um, with that, so let's, I don't think we need to make any decisions on that, but it does sound like if we had a housing project going downtown, that that would probably be in the mix with Prospect Heights. And then whichever one, and they can both get on the list, whichever one can move, that's great. If they can both move, that's great. Um, I mean, that, and it's all tied to economic development stuff, so keep that in mind. But I don't think there's bandwidth, right?
Right.
So, all right. So we have upcoming business, we're going to do the, uh, Leonine Public Affairs, we're going to be doing budgets. We're going to be trying to ratify, um, a council housing strategy. Anything else that we need to know about ahead of time?
We'll do another round of budget, uh, and, uh, can't think of my other list at this, my brain's fried too. It's written on my office.
Uh, charter stuff coming up.
The, uh, Justice Equity Diversity Committee Grant and Equity Assessment Tool.
Okay, and, uh, and, um, what's coming up? Uh, charter stuff, December, in December.
Yes.
So.
The 19th.
So everybody gets a happy, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. Does anybody have any pressing roundtable stuff that they want to?
God damn, motion to adjourn.
All right, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, yeah, just have it.
Good night, Peter, Jonathan, Heather, Lisa, Amy, Connie.
That was.